Yeah.
Ready? Ready? Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening, everyone in the audience.
Good evening, Mayor.
Okay, this is a special night. Obviously, the crowd indicates that. But more than that, how many of you are residents of Simi Valley? Just a quick show of hands. It's very special tonight because this is the city's birthday. The city is a very young, 53-years-old on this day. I'd ask gentleman Joe Grenstead to lead us in the pledge of allegiance, but he volunteered to go ahead and sing "Happy Birthday" to the city before he does the pledge. We're ready.
Please stand at the easy flag, please. Would you like to give over the word for flag to serve three stations?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Joe, for the pledge, not the singing. Okay, Mr. City Attorney, do you have a closed session report?
There are no items to reporting out of closed session.
Okay, roll call, please.
Councilmember Louvenos?
Here.
Councilmember Kavanaugh?
Here.
Councilmember Judge?
Here.
Mayor Protemlitzter?
Here.
Mayor Mashburn?
Here.
Okay, at this time, we'll do the agenda review. First, I'll ask the council, is there anything for review? And with that, the city manager will explain a little change that we determined to be helpful for this evening.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, given the audience tonight, there was a request to move forward Agenda Item 8, 9B, higher up on the agenda. We could recommend moving it to 4A right after public statements, or actually make it 4B right after the comments on public statements, or you can move it just after the, or switch the order of 9A and 9B, however earlier you want the item to be on the agenda.
Okay, I'd like to see it go to 4B. And as council members...
I agree.
Okay.
Okay.
Then we're going to move 9B to 4B.
Correct.
Okay. And that's in the interest of letting you folks go home earlier. And we love the audience and love to talk while you're all here, but I imagine a few of you would like to go home. So we'll make that change.
And Mayor, I move that all resolutions and ordinances presented tonight be read in title only, and all further reading be waived.
Second?
Give your motion a second, call for the vote.
The motion passes unanimously.
Okay, at this time, we'll address the declaration of conflict. If any member of the city council may have a conflict of interest or any reason why that member must abstain from consideration of any matter on this agenda, he or she should so declare it this time.
Mayor, I don't have a declaration of conflict, but I just have a question, a point of order, since we changed the agenda. May I?
Okay.
Since we changed Agenda Item 9B to 4B, but continued public statements are Item 6, does that mean that we're only taking 10 public comments for Item 4?
No, that's a good point. And in my opinion, we will move forward with all public comments.
There's no public hearing, so all the public statements would happen under 4A, or 4.
Okay, but it says that it's limited public statements. On the agenda, it states that during Agenda Item Number 4, the city council will hear public statements from the first 10 persons, and then the rest have to wait until Item 6.
Correct. And with there is no public statements, because there are no public hearings, we'll hold all the public statements under Item 4.
4A.
So they'll continue to be on 10.
Yep.
Well, wouldn't it be better if we just moved Item 9B to 6? To 6B? So now we wouldn't be messing with the agenda.
Sure.
Is that all right?
That's fine, either way.
Okay, so we made a change. How about that?
There you go.
And so it'll be Item 6.
6B.
Yeah, 6B.
Thank you, Mayor.
1D.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, the first item on the agenda is Item 1D1, Presentation of a Proclamation Declaring October 10, 2022 as Indigenous Peoples' Day. And Heidi DiNardo is here to read the proclamation.
Good evening, Mayor Mashburn, members of the city council. Whereas in 1977, the concept of Indigenous Peoples' Day was first proposed by a delegation of Native nations to the United Nations-sponsored International Conference on Discrimination Against Indigenous Populations in the Americas. And whereas the city of Simi Valley acknowledges that it is built upon the homelands and villages of the Ventoreños, speaking Chumash indigenous peoples of this region, and the city as we know it today, originally called Semiji by the Chumash, would not exist if it were not for their stewardship. And whereas the city of Simi Valley is committed to protecting and advocating for the dignity of all people who live, work, and visit in our community, and to supporting the principles contained in the United Nations Declaration of the Rights of Indigenous Peoples endorsed by the United States in 2010. And whereas the city recognizes the value of many contributions made to our community through indigenous peoples' knowledge, labor, spirituality, technology, science, philosophy, arts, and the cultural contribution that substantially shaped the character of Simi Valley. And whereas the city of Simi Valley offers gratitude to indigenous people on behalf of all people in recognition of their care of the land. And whereas, we set aside this day to reflect upon the struggles of indigenous people of this land and to celebrate and honor the heritage, resiliency, and diverse culture of indigenous peoples, including the Chumash, who originally settled what we know today as Simi Valley. Now therefore, the city council of the city of Simi Valley hereby proclaims October 10, 2022 as Indigenous Peoples' Day in the city of Simi Valley to celebrate the thriving and resilient cultures and values of the indigenous people in this community. It encourages continued recognition, appreciation, and celebration of our goodwill and friendship with our local indigenous peoples, presented this 10th day of October 2022.
Thank you. Do we have any indigenous folks that would like to accept and speak?
I'm sorry, we don't today. Last year, when we presented, we had everything via Zoom. We had a wonderful lady, Lyndon, who accepted and was very grateful to have the opportunity.
With that said, I know that Councilmember Louvenos has something to present.
Well, I saw that you included the land acknowledgements, so thank you for the acknowledgement that we are on Chumash land. And I do know quite a few people from the Chumash Interpretive Center that would be more than happy to accept this proclamation. So I will give you the contact information, Mr. Nardo.
Wonderful, we'll be sure to send that out. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, the next item on the agenda is 1D2, Presentation of a Proclamation Declaring the Month of October 2022 as Stop Bullying Month. And Kristin Tignak is here to read the proclamation and presented to the members of the youth council.
Good evening, Mayor Mashburn and members of the city council. The month of October 2022 is recognized as Stop Bullying Month. To accept the proclamation, I would like to invite the following youth council members forward just left of the podium. Christopher Karkorian, Nandia Krishnamurti, Maya Maysland, and Aveth Nair. The proclamation reads, whereas one out of five or 20% of American students report being bullied. And whereas multiple research studies have concluded that bullying is the most common form of violence. And whereas bullying is physical, verbal, sexual, and emotional harm, or intimidation intentionally directed at a person or a group of people. And whereas bullying occurs everywhere, including neighborhoods, schools, workplaces, and online through technology. And whereas targets of bullying are more likely to acquire long-lasting physical, emotional, behavioral, and learning problems, and are more likely to refrain from participating in school, work, attending community activities. And whereas it is estimated over 4.5 million students skip school annually due to bullying, and 85% of the time, no one intervenes to help. And whereas everyone's actions matter, and we all have a role to play in creating a world without bullying and uniting for kindness, acceptance, and inclusion. And whereas in Simi Valley, youth council has identified decreasing bullying as one of its priorities and will coordinate a citywide Stop Bullying campaign. Now therefore, the month of October 2022 is hereby proclaimed Stop Bullying Month in the city of Simi Valley to reduce the incidence of bullying in the community, presented this 10th day of October 2022.
I think it's important that I let you know that these young adults on the youth council work tirelessly to prevent bullying in their schools. And this has been an ongoing project now for several years, and I truly believe it'll continue on. And I think we owe them a big round of applause for all the work they've done.
All right. Hello, everybody. Hope you guys are having a fantastic day. The youth council would like to invite all of you to sign our Stop Bullying Pledge at the city expo booth at the street fair on October 29th, or Saturday, October 29th, from 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. It would really mean a lot to us if you could stop by. And yeah, thank you, everybody.
Thank you. And I know everybody will be at the street fair because it's such a great event. I mean, if you're not there, I can't say it. I guess it's not PC, but you're square. You got to be there. So please go there and do go to their booth and do sign that pledge. And so who does this go to? Okay. And so photo ops from the chief? Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, the next item on the agenda is 1D3, Presentation of a Proclamation Declaring the Week of October 10 through 14, 2022 as Code Enforcement Officer Appreciation Week. And Stratus Perilous is here to read the proclamation.
Good evening, Mayor Mashburn and council members.
Before I begin, I'd like to introduce our city's two co-compliance officers, Amber Edwards and Jesus Alzino. You guys like to walk forward? Tonight, we recognize code enforcement officers for their efforts and dedication and issue this proclamation that reads as follows. Whereas the state of California has dedicated, designated the second week of October as Code Enforcement Appreciation Week. And whereas code enforcement officers recognized as code compliance officers here in the city of Simi Valley provide for the safety, health, and welfare of citizens through enforcement and education of local, state, and federal laws and ordinances ranging from zoning to life safety. And whereas co-compliance officers have challenging and demanding roles and often do not receive recognition for the job they do in improving the quality of life for residents and businesses. And whereas code compliance officers are dedicated, highly qualified, and highly trained professionals who share the goals of preventing neighborhood deterioration, enhancing communities, ensuring safety, and preserving property values through knowledge, training, and application of housing, zoning, and nuisance laws. And whereas co-compliance officers often have a highly visible role in the city of Simi Valley and regularly interact with the public and a variety of federal, state, county, and local officials. And whereas throughout the state of California and specifically in the city of Simi Valley, co-compliance officers continue to navigate new state laws in conjunction with local priorities to support businesses, provide community education, and facilitate dispute resolution. And whereas the city of Simi Valley wants to recognize and honor the co-compliance officers that serve our community and acknowledge their role in leading the way to improve its quality of life. Now therefore, the week of October 10 through October 14, 2022 is hereby proclaimed Co-Compliance Officer Appreciation Week in the city of Simi Valley to encourage all citizens to join in recognizing and expressing their appreciation for the dedication and service by the individuals who serve as our co-compliance officers.
So congratulations and thank you. And I have to ask, this is the perfect opportunity. How's it going during this campaign season with the temporary sign ordinance? I'm sure there's no candidates here that have violated that in any way.
We are a busy department. But we do look forward to receiving phone calls and complaints to keep the, you know, keep it even for everybody and addressing any concerns from the public.
Good answer.
Thank you. These folks are, they hear from us on a regular basis. And I'm not talking about the council. I'm talking about the citizens of which we're all part of that. And we don't hesitate to call you to take care of our complaints, some valid and some not so valid. But we appreciate you being able to stay together, be civil, treat everybody so fairly and equally. It's a, I think in the resolution, it kind of said it's a thankless job at times. And we do realize that, but we're still going to keep calling you and bugging you. So with that, here is a copy of the resolution. And would you like to say it?
Quit calling?
Okay, well, thank you so much. All right.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, next on the agenda is Item 4, Public Statements. Agenda Item Number 4 is a time allotted for public statements on all items other than public hearings, appointments, and informational reports. Speakers will be called in the order in which the car was submitted to speak for this public statement, Item 4, for a period of no more than three minutes each. Persons addressing the city council are requested to state their name and community residence for the record. Mr. Mayor, unless you have any other comments, we can begin public statements.
Ready for the first speaker? The only comment is, please watch the lights on the podium. And it'll go from green to yellow to red. And at red, you need to stop. And if you don't see it, I'll remind you. I'm not trying to get on your case. I'll try to treat everybody equally and fairly on the time. And that's all we ask, keep within the time limits. Thank you.
The first speaker is Mary Portier.
Be here. I am, excuse me, not against anyone, but I'm concerned of the matter of transparency. I believe that transparency in City Hall is what the Simi Valley residents need in any decisions the city makes that affect their daily lives. City Hall policies must reflect upon discussion where Simi Valley is concerned. The city must ensure the community that they are working on behalf of residents and not in their own interests. If there's no transparency, then accountability should follow. Cheating the Simi Valley residents out of what is beneficial for them is horrible and must be looked at closely and brought to the public's attention. Simi Valley residents must see how the city is spending their money and how well it looks out for them. When dealing with waste management, I believe that the Simi Valley residents are being mistreated by officials who care nothing about the people they serve. An open and transparent request for a proposal is the best in this situation concerning waste management. Making bits with this vendor without transparency should not be done. Why is City Hall not being transparent with its Simi Valley residents? When the city of Westlake negotiated with waste management, they were clear and transparent with the process and significantly opened, you know, informed their residents. The money waste management currently shows tied to the landfill, not the hauler, is part of the MOU between waste management and the city when waste management asked the city to support its landfill expansion. There's no rush. The contract does not expire until December 31, 2023. I believe the council also needs waste management to give at least $200,000 from the hauler's side of their business to the city of Simi Valley to allocate. Why is the city entering a contract that does not guarantee that waste management will satisfy... satisfy SB 1383 and pay any fines if the city should not comply? Other cities like Thousand Oaks have those protections, and Waste Management had agreed to the same in the towns like Chino Hills when it was asked to compete. Waste Management is not willing to agree to basic terms that the city's neighbors have been able to secure. The city council should at least ask Waste Management these profound questions. Why is there no annual rate caps when other cities such as Thousand Oaks cap rates at Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Dietrich Tingstrom, a 46-year Simi resident and retired program director, faculty, and staff from CSU Northridge, where I now serve two committees and as trustee for five endowments. That said, I understand both fiduciary responsibility and effective collaboration, neither of which occurred here on September 19th. That night, the Samaritan Center requested 475,000 federal grant dollars. Ms. Luavenos persistently asked if an external evaluator would be used. Council pushback was both deaf and condescending. Everybody, including the read-aloud contract words, mentioned an audit requirement, but all were internal. Nobody addressed external anything. I saw that Ms. Luavenos was concerned about fiduciary duty and consistency following several changes in center leadership. External expertise minimizes the chance for monetary impropriety while maximizing consistent fiscal and program management. You all fail to acknowledge that, which tells me that you don't understand fiduciary duty or are committed antagonists, or both. I'll remember that when I mark my ballot. Also that evening, Ed Tingstrom discussed being denied sponsored use of the Public Library for an historical lecture on race racism in America. Protecting the city image and conservatism were given as reasons for that denial, but he could rent the space. The librarian failed to mention that option, while the city manager's rep neither knew the rental fee nor offered help to find out. The result? Ms. Luavenos offered to personally sponsor Ed's lecture, which demonstrated belief that the community needs to hear the topic. All others on the day has ignored the generosity on the table, gave Ed lip service, and took zero action until the next day. Mr. Judge on the phone said he would talk with the city manager to try to arrange sponsorship. That move, which smacked of politics, not collaboration, put Ed between conflicting offers. Via email, Ed asked both council members to please reach agreement about securing the library space. Judge quickly responded, quote, "I think it better to take Luavenos up on her offer because then there's no need to present an outline or credentials. If the room is paid for, you will have the freedom to speak about whatever you want." Two problems here. Judge's response suggests that freedom of speech must be paid for, and two, apparently constructive conversation among council members is worse than news reports suggest. So Ms. Luavenos, your generous offer is respectfully declined. Attendees might conclude that Simi supports freedom of speech and tough topic education. It does not, we want no part. I include that you folks need to work on listening, cooperating, and facing hard topics. Finally, there's no need to formulate responses to me. That's fine. Thank you.
Michelle Bennett?
Good evening, Mayor Mashburn and city council, and our, our Simi Valley people here, here and on TV. It's been a long time, I didn't realize I'd get nervous. Again, I'm Michelle Bennett, I've lived here in Simi Valley since 1980. I've been highly involved in many nonprofits throughout the city, was also very lucky to be vice president of the Simi Valley Chamber of Commerce for a few, for a little while, and I'm here tonight to support Waste Management. I had heard that the city is looking at the possibility of changing our trash services to another contractor. It is, in my opinion, that would be rather unwise on the part of our city. Waste Management has been such a great community partner for all of us here in Simi Valley, for both our city as a whole, as well as all of our residents. My personal experience as a homeowner, I have never experienced any problems with my service and have enjoyed many free dump days over the years. My three trash service people have been the same employees for over 20 years. That says something for a large company like this, and I appreciate all of you being here tonight. Give yourself a hand. These, these are the people that help keep our city clean and running smoothly. Over the many years, Waste Management, which a lot of people in the city probably don't know, how much Waste Management has supported probably every nonprofit here in the valley. With donations, attendance at events, their employees helping out with things, donated trash services, et cetera, this would be a great loss to our community and our many nonprofits. Also, if I recall correctly from my days working at the chamber, I believe that the city also receives a percentage back for all trash dumped in the landfill, no matter where it comes from, whether it's from our city, surrounding cities, or even the city of Los Angeles. That would be a loss to our city's bottom line, so that's something that I hope that you all consider, that you pay attention to what this new company that's supposedly proposing something. I know sometimes things need to change, but in this case, I wholeheartedly disagree. Citizens of this city, please say no to a new provider coming, because we will lose a lot. Hearing rumors from friends in Thousand Oaks, it's not all green grass over there. So the last thing I just want to say, and in regards to No Bullying Month, I have to change my last statement, because now I usually don't have to be politically correct, but that put me back on my heels a little. I understand that some, one of the persons involved in bringing this new proposal to the city is Glenn Becerra. And Glenn, shame on you. I had other words for you, but I'm going to change that, because it's sad that you sat up here on our dais for so long and everything, and now you're going to the dark side.
Well, hello. My name is Robert Clarizio. I got a funny voice, but I'm happy to have a voice. I'm a vocal cord cancer survivor, and you know, when you're nervous, you gotta speak, I kind of push the air through my vocal cords a little bit. But, um, so this is great. Mary came up here and did a lot of technical speaking, and then Melissa came up here and supported Waste Management. I want to look at every worker out here and say that I worked hard in the IVW. I worked hard as a union worker. I dug the trenches, I did what I had to do. So I know your families depend on this contract. I'm not up here opposing Waste Management.
Mr. Clarizio, you need to address the council.
Okay. All right. Thank you guys for being here. I'm not opposing, like Melissa said, was talking about. Mary just made a really good point, and she's making good points, and this is to simplify it, she made the technical points. We as a city, as people, were kept in the dark, even me, you guys came in here, you kind of teased me a little bit, like, I don't even know, it's been a long time since I've been in a session. I looked at the staff reports, we don't know how to find things, because we're busy working, and we're doing stuff and taking care of our families. But to sum it up, as much as I could find, is there's a process. Who, question one, who directed the negotiation with, to deal directly with Waste Management? Okay? We need to find that out. Number two, what were the priorities that were set on our side? And again, Waste Management has done a good job, and, but in any negotiation, both sides should ask for some things, not just say, you know, okay, well, that sounds pretty good, you know? So what are the priorities? That would be my second question. And the third question is, when is the completion of the agreement in 2011? When they, we agreed to expand the landfill? If in 2011, Waste Management would move out, up, their operations up there, and they still haven't, and I understand, things take time. But that goes in line with making promises, okay? So as a citizen, and I look at it and say, well, what are our priorities? What did we ask for? And we do pay more than anybody else and have a landfill, and, uh, and so just give us a chance, let's look at this. We have time, like Mary stated, bring it out into the open. I love you guys, and I do love you guys. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Mashburn and members of the city council. I believe you all know me. My name is Anika Sambi, and I'm the executive director of the Samaritan Center. I'd like to speak out in support of Waste Management tonight. The support Waste Management has given the Samaritan Center has been invaluable. Just the other day, I was looking for a missing person, and that person hasn't been seen at the center for a while. Justin Honzinger from Waste Management offered to put the word out to his team and help us with the search. Not only are they assisting us with trash pickup, they are also working with us on a plan to hire our clients. Many of our clients have trouble finding employment, and that's for one reason or another. Some have long gaps in their employment, and others just have trouble finding any references. So Waste Management is willing to give our clients a chance, which is more than many companies have done. This could be different, this could make the difference, that our clients need to get back on their feet, and yeah, we couldn't be more thankful for their help. Hopefully, in a few months, we'll see some of our clients actually earning an income and moving towards stable housing. I'm still quite new to this community, but one fact keeps standing out to me. Simi Valley has a very strong and generous community with lots of individuals and organizations helping our residents. And Waste Management is another great example of the generosity of an organization giving back to our community, and they're one more reason why we can all be proud living here. Thanks for your time and for hearing me out.
Mark Richardson? Mark Richardson?
Good evening, Mayor Mashburn, city council members. My name's Mark Richardson. I've been a resident of Simi Valley for 20 of the last 30 years, Ventura County pretty much the entire time. I'm here speaking on behalf of Waste Management. I see this sign up there, city of Simi Valley, and I see the beautiful picture, city of Simi Valley. It reminds me of the community that Simi Valley is. We all belong to this community, and when we think of that, we think of Waste Management. There's not a company out there that doesn't give as much as Waste Management to this city. If you, if you have a fundraiser you're in need, you call Justin at Waste Management. If you have issues with something, you call Waste Management. I've had numerous properties, ranches, houses, whatever, every time you need something from Waste Management, whether it's a roll-off, a dump, just regular trash service, you get that. You get awesome customer service, they take care of the community, they take care of their employees. I look at these people back here, and some of them you recognize, could you see them for me every Friday morning, right? Driving by the house with a nice smile and a wave. It's a family community. I see no reason to change what works perfectly for Simi Valley. If I could vote, I'd vote to keep Waste Management here without a doubt. They're a great company, great organization, they love this city, just like we love this city. And to have that changed makes no sense to me whatsoever. So I'm here in support of Waste Management, and I hope it ends up that way. Thank you for your time.
Good evening. I've been recently watching a series about Theodore Zadinsky, the Unabomber on Netflix. For his Chinese tribes, he is in a proper place. But I have read his manifesto as most people of my generation did. He wrote about the effects of technology and to be aware of it. With technology, we have made great progress in the medical fields, but at the same, technology has allowed us to tell people faster. In California, our leaders have gone crazy with solar and wind turbines, throwing billions, maybe trillions, into changing society without even having one town convert completely over, with everyone having electric vehicles, electric homes, and businesses to see if it would even morph out. I just wish that they would be as concerned about getting us an adequate supply of water, which is fundamental to human life. This would last a long time without electricity. About three weeks or so without food, or only a couple days without water. Is it that they want more control over us? Possibly, at least, that's food for thought. We may be closer to Harry Harrison's vision and silent dream than we realize. In closing, be wary of change and research it yourself, and be very wary of people who want to change it. Protect our constitution and everything it stands for, as evil is not far away. I was recently up in Otterfold and have a favorite new teller, Great Dream. I saw beautiful blue skies, white buildings, clouds, and water everywhere. Also comparing Chevron DAS prices, it was $4.29 there 24 hours after leaving here at $6 a gallon. Think about those who allow you to be in power before you do not have that choice. Also, in closing, I'd like to thank the workers at Waste Management, who many times, as I'm rushing out to the turb with a last-minute item, wait patiently. They say, who's in his pajamas rushing out here? They'd probably enjoy it. But yeah, they've always given great service. Thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Sean Weisman. I am a lifelong resident of Simi Valley and candidate for city council in District Two. I am here to speak on the issue of this Waste Management contract. I personally am in favor of Waste Management retaining their hauling services contract with our city, but we can't pick and choose when we go through the proper process. So I'm hearing both sides. I want to, you know, be attuned to all concerns, and perhaps there are some people who have had the occasional issue with Waste Management, not me personally, I've had a great experience, and I thank all the workers for their service, but there's not a need to rush through and push this contract over a year before it expires. And even when it's not convenient, I mean, I'm not saying we have to go through the whole RFP process and spend all that money considering other offers, but to at least be a little bit more transparent, because transparency is the most important thing a government body of any kind can, you know, have. So that's all.
Susan Hanscom?
Good evening. Last, last month... Thank you. Last month, I wrote to all of you to express my concern with inappropriate and unprofessional comments Mayor Mashburn and Councilmember Judge made to a member of the public during the December 19th city council meeting. The comments were unprofessional, antagonistic, and beyond inappropriate. Indeed, I would say that the behavior went against your own code of ethics, which states in part that professional conduct of members must be above reproach. Members shall refrain from abusive contact, personal charges, or verbal attacks on the public. Replies to a private citizen's public statement included Mr. Judge saying, "I'm sorry that I live in your head," and Mr. Mashburn saying, "Same book, angry, not polite, that's why you're irrelevant." The only people who appeared angry were you, Mr. Judge, and you, Mayor Mashburn. It is unfathomable to me that our mayor would refer to any community member as irrelevant. You both owe that man and the public an apology for your behavior that evening. Comments like yours are intimidating and could prevent other community members from making public comments, or maybe that's your goal. In my letter, I asked that both Mayor Mashburn and Councilmember Judge be censured. I'm asking that here again tonight. Their behavior clearly violated the code of ethics. I want to thank Mayor Pro Tem Litster for her kind and professional reply to me. I appreciated the acknowledgement. The rules were broken and the code of ethics clearly violated. A censure seems the least disciplinary action that could be taken. Politics being what they are, I don't have much hope that the censure will actually happen, but I do hope that at least two of you move to have censure added to the agenda, and that at least three of you do the right thing and show our community that you respect and value public statements and community members. Mayor Mashburn, I wish you well on your retirement. Councilmember Judge, you have spent 12 years on this dais representing Simi. Rather than rehash those 12 years, I'll simply thank you for your time and say that I hope you are not elected again in November. We need new faces, new ideas, and people with the temperament to govern on this dais. Sadly, I don't think that person is you. I hope that the residents of Simi Valley will seriously consider voting for Joe Ayala, Sean Weisman, and Nancy Mason. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Rick Shaw?
I have some pictures that I'd like to pass to the council members, and I have a box of debris.
Good evening, city council. My name is Rick Shaw. I've lived in Simi Valley for over 40 years. I'm coming here before you today because I need your help. Water restrictions, dry hot summer, paying high fire insurance, living in a high fire area. In October, Santa Ana winds are coming. Years ago in October, Ventura County Fire was on scene when the fire raged over the hills behind my house. Recently, behind my house, Public Works Department killed the grass in the parkway and replaced it with woodchips and desert plants. Last November, there was a fire in the parkway behind my house. Ventura County Fire arrived quickly and put out the fire. Cause of the fire was determined by the fire captain on scene to be a cigarette thrown from a car. He said woodchips and unmaintained leaves and debris make great kindling. Per his suggestion, at a cost of $8,500, I have had pine trees in my backyard trimmed and two pine trees taken out and removed. I have met with Public Works Inspector, and she agreed the parkway needed to be cleaned of debris and clean, and has not happened yet. I met with the city manager, who told me that the city has put down the cheapest ground cover. My response was, the ground cover doesn't work behind my house. I suggested dirt. The box there is a sample of what's behind my house. I collected that today. Very fire-fireable. The pictures I have given you and taken of the kindling, the fire last November, and my pine trees being cut down. I have spoken to the fire marshal, and he had advised me that an inspection was to come today and survey the area. As of tonight, I have not heard the outcome of that inspection. Thank you for hearing my concerns. I need your help.
One more thing. I don't have anything to do with Waste Management, but they've served me for 40 years, and they've done a great job.
Mayor Keith, council members, thank you tonight. City Manager Brian Gabler. I'm William Klepper of Simi Valley. I've lived here 22 years. I enjoy every minute living here, so just want to tell you that. Um, I'm speaking tonight on a community service side for Waste Management. They are just not check riders. They show up at events physically. Their workers show up, the individuals are there. I put on a lot of events. Police Foundation, Simi Sunrise Rotary, Ed Foundation over the years, a ton of events each and every year. They are there. They do so much. If we had to list all the community service projects they participate in, that's what the public needs to know. It's not numbers on a piece of paper. They are there, just and it's one call away. Am I loyal to Waste Management? Yes, and I'm proudly loyal of it. Um, like I said, each one of you guys show up in events, except one. I'd like to see you at an event sometime. Show up and not comment, and try to crush the place that's really helping the community. It's a very good lesson that we learn, and hopefully at a young age, to be loyal to our friends. I consider the employees of Waste Management my friends, and I'm the lucky one for it. But let's get out all that they do in the community service, so it's just not numbers on a piece of paper. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Michelle Liddell, and I am a resident and business owner here in beautiful Simi Valley. I serve as a board member for the Simi Valley Chamber of Commerce, and that's who I am representing here tonight. Our five-star chamber promotes a strong business community, and we are very grateful for the support that we have from the chamber, from the council and Mayor Mashburn. It's through these relationships that have allowed us to maintain a climate that is supportive of the business community here in Simi Valley. Tonight, I just wanted to mention a few events that we have coming up and invite all of you to those events. The first one is this upcoming Friday, we have a networking breakfast at the Best Western Hotel. That is from 7:00 to 9:00 in the morning. The cost is $20 if you are a chamber member, or $30 for individuals that are not a part of the chamber. For more information, you can visit simivalleychamber.org. Another event that we have coming up on Tuesday, October 18th, is our Connections Lunch from noon to 1:00 at Yolanda's. It is a free event. The only thing you have to pay for is your own lunch, so if you don't need anything, then it's totally free, but enjoy some yummy food. Also coming up, we have our Emerging Leaders Happy Hour Hangout. That's going to be Wednesday, October 19th, at Harley's Valley Bowl on the east end of town by Simi Valley High School from 6:00 to 8:00 in the afternoon, in the evening. The Emerging Leaders Group provides young professionals with access to networking events, educational workshops, and interaction with local leaders, such as everyone in front of me. Our Happy Hour Hangout is a networking opportunity for young professionals to build relationships with others in the community in a relaxed setting. In addition to the bowling activities, we will also have a costume contest for anyone that wants to participate, and it is a free event because it's being hosted by Waste Management. You can register to attend by visiting simivalleychamber.org. And finally, we have our Simi Valley Street Fair coming up on Saturday, October 29th. That will be at the Simi Valley Town Center. Uh, another great opportunity for you to sign the Stop Bullying pledge that you heard about earlier. In addition to that, we will have over 350 vendors, free parking, entertainment all day long, a cornhole tournament, a beer and wine garden, a kids' fun zone for free activities for kids 12 and under, and some trick-or-treating events for all the kids. For more information about our street fair, you can visit simivalleystreetfair.com. And thank you again for your time and for all that you do for our community.
Mayor Mashburn and city council, relevant. At the September 19th city council meeting, Mayor Mashburn chose to use his 6A comment time to once again use it to, as Bully pulpit to say, and I quote, "John Lapper, you're just the same book, angry, not polite, irrelevant." Another quote from the past meeting from Mayor Mashburn, "Mr. Lapper, I agree with Judge who said, 'Most of what you say is lies, and it doesn't affect my community.'" So tonight, let me ask you about relevance to our city regarding my public comments, which are all documented. As you'll notice, they are all written down. When I spoke about my daughter's birth defects and the many cancers of residents from Rockadyne Santa Susana Field Lab, was that irrelevant? When I spoke about the problems of dangerous illegal fireworks in town, was that irrelevant? When I spoke about the lack of motorcycle patrol officers in Simi causing the issues with speeding, traffic accidents, and distracted driving, was that irrelevant? When I spoke about the drought guidelines that have killed our HOA lawn and that of many other residents who comply, was that irrelevant? When I spoke about the lack of funding for capital improvements to our aging traffic engineering department, was that irrelevant? When I spoke about the potholes, streets in disrepair because no money was budgeted for major street repaving the last six years, was that irrelevant? When I advocated for change in the way of the timing of the public comments were heard, was that irrelevant? Is a resident reviewing the city staff reports irrelevant? Obviously, I could go on, as I attend virtually all city council meetings, and take the opportunity to present my concerns and solutions to our city in a very polite and civil matter. I even met with you at city hall for what I thought was a relevant, civil, and polite discussion about fireworks and traffic. Mayor Mashburn and Mike Judge have a history of using the dais to demean volunteers and speakers such as myself, Leanna Brand, Rebecca Al, Councilman Ruth Luvenos, and Mr. Litster. How disappointing that Mayor Mashburn uses the dais for such bullying during the October Stop Bullying Month. Yes, Mayor, bullying takes all kinds of forms. Your September 19th council comment and Facebook post on your personal page of "Irrelevant" led to a tirade of personal attacks on social media from the local haters you empowered with your comments. And remember, Mayor, our wonderful youth council members are watching. I call on the city council to censure Mayor Mashburn for his September 19th, 2022 comments that clearly violated the City of Simi Valley code of ethics and conduct for elected officials. This is about our city council doing better. All civil comments matter. Please vote for change November 8th. Thank you. And by the way, I, I did read the whole staff report on Waste Management and impressed with some of the changes that they're offering, but I do believe in transparency, so I'm not familiar with the bidding process is. Thank you very much, city council.
Maggie Kestley?
All right. First of all, been a long time since I've been up here. I want to thank the city council, the members of the city government here, and the city staff. They work really hard putting this stuff together. I want to say thank you. You guys did an excellent job and prepared that resolution. A lot of the questions that were being asked out here about transparency and how the process worked is actually in that resolution, if you'll pull it up online and read it. It's great to be back addressing you. I think the last time, when I was chairing the Budget Advisory Committee, did some presentations for you, or maybe that's when I lost to Lister in the election. All right. It's a great place to live. I've been here since 1984, raised my family here. My kids are now raising their kids here, and my son-in-law was part of one of the neighborhood councils. Uh, but I'm here in full disclosure and transparency to represent Waste Management in this aspect of the contracts. It didn't start out that way. I went to learn more about it. I was talking with Justin. The more I learned, I asked if I could get in and help and maybe educate the council and some other decision-makers on this. I've been a local businessman here, as my wife has as well, so we've had both commercial and residential service. It's always been outstanding. But what I wanted to do is bring, and it's been brought up in several different ways, the amount of give-back that Waste Management gives to our community. I thought I had a pretty good understanding of that, but from my volunteer efforts. As you can see out here, they employ around 200 employees locally. Over 65% of those are here in Ventura County, and over, around 40% are right here in Simi Valley. Thank you guys for showing up. Another good example is a corporate citizen in these times of water shortages. Waste Manage It is the single largest user of the recycled water coming out of our Waste Management Treatment Plant. I've heard of talk about water today. Think about that, an initiative that Waste Management took on many years ago at their own expense and still today pays Simi for the use of that water. Another example is their ongoing clean air energy projects to capture the methane, which they already do, collect it, and use it in their collection trucks and vehicles, and push the excess back into the city infrastructure. They were also instrumental in providing the land and all the costs to bring our police department a state-of-the-art outdoor training facility and shooting range. That has saved city and police department countless hours of overtime and other costs, and keeps more of our officers available. I'll close real quick with something that I learned working for a large corporation and myself. All good business is built on relationships, and this has been and will continue to be a good business relationship for the citizen dead us going forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Maggie Kestley? Maggie Kestley?
Good evening, city council, mayor, and staff. Uh, I came here fully in support of Waste Management. You know, if people that have been in this community for a long time, Waste Management's been here, most of our trash haulers are the same people, been there day after, or year after year after year. They are a community-minded business. And if you talk to the people in Thousand Oaks, all of us have friends over there, every dollar they saved, they're paying in fines. They get penalized for this, penalized for that, and they are not a community-based company. And one other thing I do want to put on the record here, it's embarrassing what the former council member is going out and doing and saying in our community. It's, he lost all integrity as far as I'm concerned. Um, he's going out there, I know some business people have called me concerned, he's flat-out lied about doing what he said, not knowing he's been on camera doing it, and that's an embarrassment, and it's an embarrassment to what he is trying to bring to this community. And so anyways, back to supporting Waste Management, you know, where we have, I think our trash person's been there for probably 15, 20 years without any issues at all. You watch him go out there, a neighbor's trash can's been, had fallen over, he gets out of his truck, he goes over, pushes it all back in it, dumps it. You're not going to get that kind of service for other companies. You know, they also, like everybody said here, they support the local businesses, as they support, I'm sorry, they support the nonprofits and stuff like that. My wife, who is not here, she represents about 400 businesses here. They work hand-in-hand with her to try to bring all the up-to-date stuff they can do, whatever they can do to save money for the businesses. They are out there. Justin himself has probably met with her, I would say, at least a half a dozen times. They are a community-based business, and they deserve to stay here. Anyways, thank you very much.
Good evening. I think the last time that I spoke here, our mayor was Bob Huber, so you know it's been a while, and I must feel very strongly about this topic. Waste Management is really an amazing organization, just like Joe was talking about. Just like Joe was talking about about a week and a half ago, our driver hopped out to take care of our neighbor's trash that was spilled all over, and they had stuff piled up. They're absolutely amazing, and it's indisputable. They are a great community partner. But I was a little bit surprised by the city staff's recommendation to approve such an extensive 20-year agreement with Waste Management without any community input or what I call comparison shopping. When I consider a large project around the house or any kind of large purchase or a long-term contract, I always comparison shop. And I want to get a good idea of what's out there in terms of competition. And even I have a preferred vendor in mind, I still do a little bit of checking around. So I just think that's the prudent thing to do. Therefore, I'm obviously supporting that the city consider doing an RFP process for this. However, I also could encourage for you to take a look at another option, which would be to solicit public review. I happen to serve on a neighborhood council. I'm not here to speak on behalf of my neighborhood council, but this is a perfect opportunity to send this around just to make sure that everybody gets a look at it and we get some public input to take a look at that. And I really encourage the council to solicit some public review prior to making any hasty decisions. We have some time. So let's take a good look at this and make sure everybody's comfortable with it and onboard. Thank you for your time.
Stacy Vanderchef?
Good evening, City Council. I just wanted to briefly speak about Agenda Item 9A. And that Agenda Item deals with the surplus that the city has. And I just wanted to say, first of all, that I am grateful to live in a city that is fiscally responsible enough to have a surplus and a pretty sizable surplus at that. And I just wanted to state that I appreciate the staff report, and I agree with what the staff report recommends doing with the city surplus. And I also wanted to specifically highlight the first recommendation, which was to allocate 40% of that surplus to the Pension Retirement Fund. I think that's very, very important because many members of the community are concerned about the pension liability and how it's kind of gotten a little bit seemingly out of control. And I appreciate that the staff report recommends giving a little bit over $3 million to that retirement fund. And I look forward to hearing what the city council plans to do about this situation in the future. Thank you.
Thank you.
Stephanie Jennings? Stephanie Jennings?
I have a badge on, that's how it should be known. Yes, yes, yes. Well, good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council. I am Stephanie Jennings. I now have learned my name. And I am the president of the Simi Valley Quanis. It's my great pleasure, on behalf of the Quanis, to speak in support of Waste Management. As you've heard from lots of speakers tonight, this is an impressive and excellent corporate partner. In this recent July 2 or 4, but it was on the 2, that we participated with you as a partner, as well as the Park District as a partner, Simi Valley Quanis couldn't have done the job without the support that we received from Waste Management. And this is just a small token of what they have done over the years for not just the Quanis, but also for many, many nonprofits in our community. And as many people have spoken to you tonight, this is an amazing community in terms of the service that happens here. That's Quanis's goal, is community service and service to children. And Waste Management has been a fantastic partner with us in that regard. So thank you for your time.
Karen Hoyle?
Good evening, Mayor Mashburn and Council. I am also a member of the Quanis and the Suroptimists. I work with the Boys and Girls Club. Sometimes we go to, I do a lot of volunteer work, and nobody is easier. And I do a lot of sponsors. They send me out to get sponsors because no one else wants to. So Waste Management is so easy. They just said, "What do you need, Karen?" And they have it. They have been amazing. A few years ago, my friends, we decided after Houston had a big hurricane that we want to take a big truck and fill it up. And we filled it up in two weeks. But we got the truck, but we didn't know how we're going to pay for the gas. Guess who paid for it? Waste Management. I collected a lot of Christmas gifts one year from Make-It Corporation. And I went there to pick them up. And I went, "Oh, my gosh, I can't pick them up. I don't have..." Call Waste Man... They sent their truck over to pick up our Christmas gifts for the kids. You don't know where all the... I mean, I can't even remember all the things they've done, but they're so easy to work with. They give back. And why would we want to replace a partner like Waste Management? Because they really are amazing. And every time they pass you, they wave, they're happy. Their trucks are clean. They're just really a great company. Thank you.
Mike Court?
Good evening, Mayor, members of the City Council, Mr. Gable and Mr. Caseras. My name is Michael Court, and I am here as a member of the Simi Valley community to address what seems to be a hot topic as of late, that being the bidding process of the waste hauling contract. Most citizens seem to be focused on dollars and cents, which don't, don't get me wrong, is important. But in my opinion, there is more here to be considered. As a businessperson and a consumer, I look beyond pricing when it comes to all sizes of purchases and agreements. Items that come to mind are ethics and morals of the people that represent the service or product, the product quality itself, and customer service, to name a few. But one particular item of due diligence in this matter is looking at certified third-party information, such as the Better Business Bureau. They provide a rating of a particular company and if that company is also accredited with them. Some of the reportable information of the Better Business Bureau is licensing, government actions, and advertising review, to name a few. What I found most interesting is the Code of Conduct with the Better Business Bureau Advertising Review. It states, and I quote, "Better Business Bureau promotes truth in advertising by contacting advertisers whose claims conflict with the Better Business Bureau Code of Advertising Standards. These claims may come to our attention from our internal review of advertising, consumer complaints, and competitor challenges. Better Business Bureau asks advertisers to prove their claims, change ads to make offers more clear to consumers, and remove misleading or deceptive statements." Close quote. Now WM, in addition to the many other benefits that Simi has received, has been a member of the Better Business Bureau and accredited with them since 2001, with an A-plus rating, I might add. On the other hand, as of today, the possible competitor Athens is not an accredited member of the Better Business Bureau, and their rating is a D, as in dog. I simply ask that you take into account all aspects of WM has done for Simi Valley and what they are doing and planning to do going forward. It is my opinion, as a member of this community, that anything considered other than continuing the partnership with WM would not be in the best interest of this city. Please do not step over dollars to pick up pennies. Thank you.
Robbie Hidalgo?
Good evening, Mayor. Mayor Protem, council members, Mr. Gable, Mr. Caseras. My name is Robbie Hidalgo. I'm a proud 34-year resident of the city of Simi Valley. I'd like to preface my comments briefly just by saying it's an honor to present here tonight on the city's birthday, as well as on the same night that somebody mentioned Soylent Green here at the podium, which I never thought I'd hear. I have a couple. I rarely bring notes, but I don't want to miss what they are, so at least it goes on the record correctly. Consent calendar. Brief comment regarding 7/3. I support the city staff's recommendation. And I actually wanted to applaud, in particular, Chief Livingstone's Department for purchasing the bikes. Were it me, I would take some of this grant or reallocation funds from 9A and buy them a dozen bikes. And the reason why is because I think one of the critical components that's mentioned in the staff report is being able to give our peace officers an opportunity to connect with the community. And I think ultimately, in the long term, that's going to have one of the biggest impacts into the safety of the community is by breaking the barriers that seem to currently exist. On 7/5, it's a sidebar. I'm sure our purchasing department is all over it. I went to the Lenovo site today to take a look at the workstations that we're planning on updating throughout the city. And I found the price, just for a small business owner, is $10 less than what we've been quoted for 170 you'd order. So hopefully, somebody can use that information and maybe get some other kind of perk out of whoever the value-added vendor is. 9A, just briefly, I couldn't support the Calpers payment more. I'll say it again, I couldn't support the Calpers payment more. Somebody else spoke articulately about it. I won't reiterate it. 9B, with a minute 11 left, I could take five minutes and speak on this. As a resident, I am a customer of Waste Management. As one of the founding partners of our newest entertainment venue here in town, I'm a commercial client of Waste Management. As a nonprofit director, I have been a beneficiary of the community project grant funding. Were every franchise contract that were cut in this city to replicate the Waste Management relationship, I would be the happiest camper there. This is such a symbiotic dynamic between us. Of course, we have the landfill, and I realize those are a couple of different structures. My biggest concern, as a fiscal conservative, is that we just don't have six figures to spend putting something out to bid that we're perfectly comfortable with. I can think of a lot of economic development projects and other projects where those kinds of funds would be better suited to the growth and welfare of the city. But in this case, we're in a very economically unstable period of the nation's life. One of the most stable things in this city right now is Waste Management. And so I'd just like to add my voice to that and to all these fine people who work for us.
Juan Miguel?
Need to break some ice over here. Good evening, council members. It's been a while. How have you been here? Can you guys hear me okay? Okay, bear in mind my beautiful English. I'm here to make a few requests. One of them is about the city council meetings or all the meetings that are held here. I was wondering, there is a possibility that you guys can have closed captioning in Spanish as well as in English. And the reason I ask is because I have a lot of friends and resident members that watch it. And sometimes a lot of them are like me, that English is a second language. They don't catch all the sounds. And the sound here is very challenging. So that would be a good service to the community. And what a better way to inform the citizens so they can make better decisions and they can elect a better officials. So if you guys can consider that, that would be a wonderful thing to do. My other request that I want to make is about transportation, about a public transportation system. I know I came here once, and I was told that they were going to take care of it. And all what they did, they just changed the name of the routes. And basically, it's the same. So I'm no expert on it, but I can tell you, if you use me, I can make better routes for the service of the community, given that there are a lot of things that are coming up. There is the Olympics coming up in LA. There is the World Cup is coming up pretty soon. And public transportation would be the best way for the people to commute to the valley and get all those services. And honestly, I can help you. Trust me. Trust me, I can help you. Mr. Judge, you made a comment last time, but hopefully, this time we can get something done. Okay? I'll be happy to help you. Let's work as a team. Okay? The other comment that I'd like to make, well, you know, to continue transportation, I'm sorry, is that there is public transportation for kids 18 and under. I was wondering, there is a way that the city can support either a volunteer or a paid adult in the buses? Because there are a lot of parents that would love to have their children to go to the school using public transportation. But they don't feel comfortable because there is no adult in the bus. And obviously, the driver cannot take care of it. And I think that would be a good way to do it so we can increase the air quality and diminish the traffic. I think it would be ways so we can go there. I'm sorry, I'm running out of time. Potholes, there is the street on Fitzgerald between Gibson and Hasbro that been fixing some potholes, but it's still getting worse and worse. If you guys can look at it and then fix it. And lastly, I want to say thank you to Ruth Luvenos. And thank you so much for supporting Waste Management, for being there at 3:00 in the morning to fight for the labor rights. I hope that my friend that came here, my dear friend, I believe, he wasn't there. So she is there. And she's been there many times and many other places. Sadly, many people treat her really, really bad. And one of the members is here. She's running for city council. I just want to say for full disclosure, thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Lynn Hilton?
Good evening, Mr. Mashburn, Mayor Mashburn and City Council. I didn't really prepare anything to write, so I'm just going to speak from my experience and from my heart. Most of you all have seen me throughout the years. My husband and I have lived in Simi Valley for 25 years. 10 years ago, I became an ambassador at the Simi Valley Chamber of Commerce. From there, I went through the Leadership Class 2013. And I am now the Chair of the Leadership Steering Committee for Simi Valley. I'm also the Vice President of QBN, which is a group, a networking group that meets every Tuesday morning at the junkyard. And I am surrounded by people and businesspeople who live and work in our community. And all of us have been touched by Waste Management. And all of us have been touched by Waste Management. So if you don't know, I'm here in support of Waste Management. Through the years, I've been involved in nonprofits, I've been involved in city events, I've... Waste Management is always there. You know, I don't know why you shop around when you have such a partner in the community that actually cares about the community. My concern is that Athens will not share that same support. And so I'm here in support of Waste Management, and that's all I have to say, but please, don't fix it if it's not broke.
Lisa Hemmenway? Lisa?
Good evening, Mayor, Mr. Mayor, council members, Mr. Gabler, Mr. Casares and city staff. My name is Lisa Hemmenway, a Simi Valley resident. I am the Community Relations Specialist for WM, formerly known as Waste Management. I grew up here and raised my family in this great town. I've worked locally for over 15 years, but I've been with WM for almost 30 years. As WM's ambassador, engaging and bringing community spirit is what I love, and I'm passionate about sharing our story and engaging in thoughtful conversations around environmental stewardship. WM has been deeply rooted here for more than 25 years. We may be a large corporation, but I myself and many of my colleagues consider ourselves as your local hometown service provider. As a responsible neighbor, caring about our customers has been part of our commitment. WM takes an active role in the community where we live and work. We are proud of our track record of local stewardship and partnership with schools, community organizations and environmental groups. We give back and participate so others can fulfill their dreams and their aspirations. Being part of Simi Valley is who I am, and over the years have volunteered and served as a board member for the YMCA, Simi Valley Chamber of Commerce, PTA, Royal Football Boosters and currently the Simi Valley Education Foundation. I am also a proud graduate of Leadership Simi Valley, class of 2009. Some may appreciate that I'm a Simi High graduate, and others will appreciate that my kids graduated from Royal High. So, in the end, I get the best of both worlds, right? My community dates back to the landfill expansion modernization project in 2011 by bringing people together and inviting the community to our facility to see who we are and what we do. I am pleased to say that we have continued the tradition of offering educational landfill tours, which is my favorite part of the job, and I am also known as landfill Lisa to the kiddos. Each year, more than 1,400 people visit our facility where we have engaging conversations about the importance and appreciation of recycling, sustainability and wildlife habitat conservation. Our wildlife conservation programs has earned us certification by the Wildlife Habitat Council since 2007. As a certified wildlife habitat preserve, WM was recently included as a finalist in another habitat category for a trees and restoration project in the Alamos Canyon. Earlier this year, Sebastian from Boy Scout Troop 622 earned his Eagle Scout Award, the highest rank that a Boy Scout can earn, including, that includes by building five barn owl nest boxes throughout the Simi Valley landfill's property. I know WM does a great job protecting the environment, providing quality service and giving back to our community while ensuring the best possible service that we can. Thank you for allowing WM to call this great city home.
Steve Lee?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members and staff. My name is Steve Lee. I have worked with WM GI Industries since 1997, excuse me. I started my career as a driver and through training and the opportunities Waste Management gives its employees, I worked my way up and currently serve as the district operations manager at our hauling facility here in Simi Valley. Working for WM has given me financial stability and great health benefits to allow me to raise my family here in Ventura County. As a resident of Ventura County for my entire life, I have personal interest in what Waste Management brings to the communities we serve. As you can see from the sea of green behind me, we lead a large team that works hard to provide the best service possible for all residents and businesses in Simi Valley. Our local WM GI Industries team consists of seven route managers, more than 200 employees ranging from union drivers, union mechanics and administrative support. And as mentioned earlier, 40% of our workforce are raising their families here in Simi Valley community. Over the years, our relationships and collaboration efforts with the city have developed a strong foundation that we at WM are truly proud of. We look forward to continuing to build on that foundation now and into the future. I ask that you renew WM's agreement to allow myself and my WM team to continue to service the city of Simi Valley. Thank you for your time.
Justin Honsinger? Justin Honsinger?
Honorable Mayor, council and staff, my name is Justin Honsinger, and I'm here on behalf of WM this evening. And as a third-generation resident, I am proud of our community. I am fortunate to be working for WM where my pride in Simi Valley is valued and encouraged. For more than 25 years, WM has been servicing our community. At WM, we have paved the path in so many ways. Here are just a few examples. We are one of the first companies in California to transfer our fleet from diesel to natural gas. And today, we're already test piloting electric trucks. Our commitment to safety has raised the bar across the industry. Recently, you folks attended a groundbreaking ceremony at our landfill for a new renewable natural gas facility, which takes landfill gas and converts it to a pipeline, quality natural gas to replace the need for fossil fuels. WM has great resources that helped us provide excellent, reliable service to the people of Simi Valley while minimizing environmental impact so that both the economy and the environment can thrive. Who doesn't like that? But do not let our position as industry leaders make you think that we're some cold corporate entity, because we're not. We're actually the exact opposite of that. With that said, I want to let you in on a little secret on how we got to where we're at tonight internally. When I started my new position here at WM as your regional public sector manager, my senior leadership team came to me and said, "Justin, what does Simi Valley need from us to better service them?" I said, "Let me go out and ask the different folks with the community what they would like to see." I gathered suggestions, brought it back to our leadership team, and they all stated these are great ideas. Some of those ideas I gathered from the community were an additional free landfill day, everyone loves those, we know, a household hazardous waste collection service, and improved communication with our residents and commercial owners to help understand SB 1383 rules. That's really important, that community and that partnership. They represent a direct community input to recycling and waste services for Simi Valley for the present and the future. We never forget, at WM, the most important thing we do is provide service to our customers. That's why I'm here tonight to ask for the opportunity to continue a great partnership between all of us here at WM and the city of Simi Valley. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Martin Melendez?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members and staff. My name is Martin Melendez, and I'm a Simi Valley resident since 1992. I've been in the waste industry for 35 years. My career began as a residential driver with Anderson Ravish, who was the family-owned business in Simi Valley, and since transitioned to Waste Management in 2018. Working for Waste Management has provided me great opportunities for my family and my career. I have raised my family here in Simi Valley, and my four kids attend Simi Valley schools. My team consists of 21 drivers servicing residential, commercial, rolloff for this very community. My passion is to provide the best customer service. I love working with my customers every day. I'm always up for a challenge, committed to providing a solution for our customers, and I ask you to renew the Waste Management franchise agreement. Thank you very much, and I will now, I will share my communication in Spanish. Buenas tardes, señor alcalde, miembros del consilio y su personal. Mi nombre es Martin Melendez, un residente de Simi Valley desde 1992. He permaneció en esta industria por 35 años. Mi carrera comenzó como un chofer residencial en Anderson Ravish, una compañía operada por una familia aquí en Simi Valley. Desde la transición a Waste Management en el 2018, Waste Management me ha proporcionado grandes oportunidades para mi familia y mi carrera. Mis cuatro hijos crecieron aquí y atendieron las escuelas de esta ciudad. Mi equipo consiste de 21 choferes que proporcionan servicio residencial, comercial, rolloff para esta grandiosa comunidad. Mi pasión es siempre proporcionar el mejor servicio a nuestros clientes. Me gusta mucho trabajar con ellos cada día y siempre estaré dispuesto a continuar encontrando soluciones para ellos. Les pido, por favor, renovar la franquicia del contrato para Waste Management y muchas gracias.
Fernando Lara?
Good evening, city officials, residents of Simi Valley. My name is Fernando Lara, vice president of Teamsters Local 186. I'm here today to show support for the extension of the contract with GI Industries, also known as Waste Management. You know, as we all know, you know, we all have friends and families that want to be, you know, want to be doctors, lawyers, right, in their life and pursue their dreams, but sometimes that doesn't come to fruition. Sometimes those people have to join the workforce, which we see here. And sometimes, these people here are under a collective bargaining agreement that have a livable wage, union-sponsored healthcare, right, which they pay $20 per visit, $10 prescriptions, $10 hospitalization and a pension fund, you know, paid for by the company 100%, right? No vendor that would come up here can say that, right? Obviously, they've been a good asset to the community of Simi Valley, and we asked for that extension, right? So I ask for your support 100% to extend the contract with GI. Thank you.
Thank you.
Marisol Aldana?
Good evening, honorable mayor, council members and city staff. My name is Marisol Aldana, and I began my career with WM in 2017 as an account representative. Currently, I am a route manager at WM GI Industries and lead a team of 25 drivers to provide best service for our communities. I would like to take a moment to share a story about my family and how WM has grown and has allowed me to grow and prosper. My sister started at WM as a temporary employee in February of 2000. At this time, my father had lost his job and was going through a difficult divorce while raising four children of his own. My sister encouraged my father to come work to WM. This decision has allowed him to have job security and benefits to care for his children for close to 20 years. "I'm so happy for him as he will be retiring very soon," so he says. Dinner conversations were always about talking trash, and I've listened to them since I was eight years old. Here I am, the next generation. The same way WM opened the doors to my sister, my father and myself, I hope to give the opportunity to continue to open the doors to future employees and show them what it is to be a part of the WM family. I am currently enrolled in WM college program and earning my master's degree in organizational leadership, which I graduate next semester. Working at WM for the past five years has provided many opportunities that have allowed me to grow personally and professionally. I've just completed the WM frontline leadership development program. I'm a member of the WM's empowerment network, helping build relationships and support women in their workplace. What I enjoy the most about my job is the relationships that I have built over the years. I value my team of drivers that show me what it is to provide quality of service, commitment and dedication to their careers. Every day is a new opportunity, which I look forward to every day. Thank you.
Doug Corcoran? Doug Corcoran?
All right. Thanks for waiting for me. Honorable mayor, esteemed council members, my name is Doug Corcoran, I work for WM. Thank you for giving me a few minutes here tonight. For nearly 40 years, I've been on the front lines in this business. I've been directly involved with probably 100 or more franchise extensions, RFPs, all sorts of discussions regarding franchises. Tonight, I'm hoping to provide you some context around the subject of RFP and bid processes compared to extension negotiations. And it won't be long, there's just a couple of points I really want to make on that. I read the letters to the editor written by your former councilman, who's decided to be a hired gun, I guess, and others, and on the surface, some of their arguments might look compelling, but the fact is they're based on misunderstandings about how RFP processes work in our business. Some claim that RFPs will guarantee the best rates. There's zero support for this claim in the record. The reality is that for the most part, contract rates are pretty similar to each other on a regional basis. And why is this? This is because the costs to provide service are regionally consistent. Disposal sites, recycling facilities, compost facilities, et cetera, they're regional, they're used by the haulers in the regions, they're used by the cities in the regions. On top of that, all of the haulers in this business, basically, we buy our trucks from the same manufacturers, we buy the containers from the same manufacturers. Our rate structures are close, they're not exactly the same, but they're fairly close. And when I say rate structure, I mean the rate of pay for workers, the labor rates are pretty close. So rates that are charged to customers organically follow costs. I'm sure someone right now is thinking, "But what about Thousand Oaks, right? Big deal in Thousand Oaks." Here's what I have to say about that. Sometimes, you get a situation in RFP or in other situations where a firm is just experienced, inexperienced or incompetent, and they grossly underprice a contract. Many companies made this mistake, have been bankrupted, we've seen it through the years. In other cases, a company bids underwater to try to disturb the market in a given region. This practice is unethical, it's illegal and it should not be tolerated. So the hauler in TO is also the hauler in Santa Paula. And for those who think that the Thousand Oaks rates are a possible outcome for Simi Valley, I would say, "Look at what just happened to Santa Paula. An enormous increase in rates coupled with the most extreme rate adjustment formula I've ever seen. I cannot think of a clear admission that they have a problem with their rates in Thousand Oaks and they're trying to make it up somehow." So I think, I see that light is yellow, I'm almost done, I would just say, "It comes down to the record reliability and trustworthiness of the hauler you're considering. I hope we've done enough work and that we earned your support tonight." Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Eric Rose?
Mr. Mayor, council members, thank you for letting me speak here tonight. Eric Rose, I'm a resident of Simi Valley and also a consultant for Waste Management. I'm not going to repeat all the wonderful things that have been said about Waste Management tonight, they're true. But I want to address two things that I heard the audience talk about tonight. One was transparency, and I would just urge the people who talked about transparency to take a moment to go on the city's website and look at the staff report. It's over 200 pages that details the discussions and the contract that is being proposed tonight. If they don't want to go on the website and don't have access to the web, it's in the lobby. It's been posted for some time. I think the staff did an incredible job of being transparent in discussing what the contract is offering to the residents and the businesses in Simi. And the second thing I wanted to touch on was the idea of comparison shopping. Let's go see what's out there. I think the city staff did an incredible job. They saw what's out there. They looked at Santa Paula, as Doug just mentioned, and they saw a 55% rate increase immediately on a 25-year contract with two 10-year extensions with a minimum base cost of living adjustment of 3.5%. We can't afford that here in Simi. As a resident, I'm glad that the staff looked and did some comparison shopping and saw what's out there, and we don't have to look much further than what just occurred in Santa Paula. Thank you for your time.
Jimmy Johnson?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and city council members and city staff. My name's Jimmy Johnson. I'm a rolloff driver for Waste Management, and I've been there for 30 years. I live here in Simi Valley with my wife, and we've raised three kids. Now, they have kids of their own, and they all live here in Simi Valley. There's two things that Waste Management stress to us, that's safety... There's two things that Waste Management stress to us, that's safety and service. I'm proud to say that we do both as well and as great as we can. It's a part of our culture at Waste Management. Us drivers love working here, and we hope to continue working here. Thank you.
Bruce Boyer?
I'm Bruce Boyer from Chatsworth Lake Manor, former candidate for sheriff and Ventura County clerk. And I got to tell you, when I showed up tonight, I didn't know this was on the agenda, but I was excited to see everybody from Waste Management here. Yeah, I was excited to see all the trash truck drivers. It made my day. Heck, might even make my week. So what I came to talk to you all about is bringing what's happening to the people. In 2016, the city council decided to pass an ordinance that criminalized the display of an advertisement, which is our flag, if you want to place it on a vehicle, non-motorized, you know, our boat trailers and such, bicycles or other devices. Yeah, they did that. And I came and I told you, "I will not stand for you criminalizing our free speech. You need to repeal it, or I'm going to sue you." What'd you do? You blew me off. You blew me off. And I said, "No, I'm going to sue you, and I'm going to win, and you're going to make these people pay the bill." You blew me off. So what happened? Yeah, Bruce won, Bruce Boyer versus Simi Valley. Yeah, I won, U.S. Federal Court, Ninth Circuit. And what has the Ninth Circuit said? Yeah, you repealed the ordinance last April of 2021. But you're not done. You doubled down and wrote another one. I said to my attorney, Mr. George Wallace, I said, "George, they just doubled down on the same losing argument." And he just kind of went, "Yeah, they kind of did." So now we're going to fight this one. No disrespect, Mr. Casares, but it's strict scrutiny, that's the standard you can't hold. You're going to lose. Who is going to pay the bill? These people. The guys driving the trash trucks are paying the bill. Now, if you'd like to stand up and say, "You know what? We were wrong," and you're going to pick up the tab, do it. In April of 2021, this five city council members all unanimously voted to continue to criminalize the flying of an American flag from a bicycle or a lawn chair. Yes, it's funny until they hook you up for it. Yeah. So how about you hold a public forum? Because I want the settlement to be public. I want everybody to weigh in and see, I want you to put it on Zoom. I've got four more lawsuits coming, four more, because you've broken the law, you violated our rights. How about you hold a public forum, and you tell everybody that the guy in the cowboy hat doesn't know what he's talking about, he has no case, he's going to lose. Bring it on.
Richard Perini?
That's a hard act to follow. So, council members, staff, I want to thank you for doing what you do. You take the abuse of people, you get name-called, and you get to sit there and keep your mouth I, you know, I've heard the constant comment of transparency, and I think it is pretty transparent. We have a great partner, I don't need to go on about her else we'll get cavities about all the sweet talk about Waste Management, but they're a wonderful partner. My concern is their level of safety. They wear their vests here. If we decide to go with somebody who's cut-rate, who's proven to be unethical in court by their own omission, defrauding the state, even the city with simple things by weighting their vehicles down when they weigh in, and then when they, you know, take the weights off, we're losing revenue, and that's the company we're considering? And to have an ex-council member bring them to the table and act as if he's just a good Samaritan while he's being paid for it, borderline on fraud. If you're going to be an active agent for a company, that should be announced. If you're going to put commentary in papers, which should actually be a paid ad, that should be known. And thankfully, somebody wrote that. But I'm a resident, I'm a business owner, I have children in this town, and in February I have a grandchild. I love this city, and I think we need to keep relationships like this. It's not the, so somebody said, stepping over dollars, or excuse me, pennies to save, it was backwards, stepping over dollars to save a few pennies, but more importantly, we jeopardize the safety of our landfill. If something went wrong at that landfill because somebody wanted to go with something that saved 2 millimeters on a rubber compound that stops from contaminating our water supply that we might use someday, I mean, is it really worth it? And I think you've all considered it, and I think you know the record, as was stated by Mr. Cord earlier, a D. Why would we even consider that? Why would anybody even come up here to argue with you, to say, "Please consider them"? So thank you for looking out for the city, all of you, including you, Ms. Lavenos. I know you get a hard time sometimes, but I think everybody has an opinion, has a different way of doing it. But thank you.
Thank you very much for everything that you guys do. I want to also thank the drivers. I've lived here in Simi Valley since 1994 and have had two homes and have done a lot of construction, and Waste Management has always been fantastic for us. Living up in Big Sky, our trash cans a lot of times blow away during Santa Ana winds, and nobody knows who's got a trash can, and Waste Management has come out and just replaced the trash cans when all of a sudden ours is missing.
I'm so sorry, Don Ruff, I just want to make sure you're speaking in your individual capacity.
I am.
Yes.
Am I not? I'm sorry?
I just want to clarify that you're speaking on your individual capacity, not as a planning commission member.
I am speaking on myself, not as a planning commission member. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I also really love the fact that they are unionized, because that's really important to me. I would like to just know whether or not we can get smaller trash cans, because I don't have a lot of trash, and I like the small ones that I've seen in Ventura, as well as I would like their health insurance benefits. So I'll get that out of the way first, because whoever has, that's really fantastic. Now, some of you guys may not like what I have to say, because that has to do with a specific person, but I'm actually here just to read a letter by Glenn Becerra, as he is in Seattle. And this is just another example of how, you know, we've got more in common than we don't have in common. And I think that our city council in general could be working better together instead of, you know, maybe crossing party lines and working as a team that represents our city versus some of the political stuff. Anyway, this is not my words, these are somebody else's, this is Glenn's. The city council views its waste collection franchise as a partnership, and it certainly should. A good partnership requires trust. A trust requires willingness to be fair and transparent and to benefit each other. Waste Management has been the beneficiary of the city's trust for three decades, but as Waste Management has been fair and transparent, has Waste Management been fair and transparent with the city, it's the question the city can and should examine. Waste Management has been charging city residents $35 per month to collect their trash and recycle. And as Waste Management has represented to other jurisdictions in Ventura County, the cost of collections are going up due to SB 1383. Yet Waste Management is now offering to lower its rate significantly to $28. The city should ask itself, why was Waste Management charging residents a substantially higher rate all those years if they can now lower rates, just, uh, lower their rates? Ooh, I've got so much time that I've got to have to just get to it. The city should also ask itself, should it be rewarding a company with no bid agreement and could extend it as long as 20 years when Waste Management could reduce rates today? I think that I can just go ahead and give you guys this letter itself so that you guys, as the city council members, can read it, because these are not my words. Thank you.
Thank you.
Salvador Orozco?
Good evening, Mayor, council members, and city staff. My name is Salvador Orozco Jr. I'm here to share my Waste Management story with you all. I was born in Simi Valley and lived here all my life. I'm now raising my family here in this great town. Back in 2016, I started out as a temporary employee and was hired on full-time roll-off driver, and I love what I do. I know this community very well, not only because I work here, but I've settled in and made this my home. My father and brother also work for Waste Management as drivers, and I'm fortunate to see them every day and share our experience together. We've also just become a union site, and we are now being represented by Teamsters Local 186. We fought hard to gain that, and we've acquired some great benefits. We also have a pension plan now, and we all know we must put in our years of service to receive a good pension. We're asking for you to vote yes on the agreements so our Waste Management, G.I. team, can continue providing the great service to the city and our customers. Thank you.
Is there a Salvador Orozco? That was Salvador Orozco Jr. I have another card for Salvador Orozco. No? Okay. Thank you. Jimmy Johnson? Joe Pachowski?
Good evening, Mayor Mashburn, members of the city council. Coming here tonight, I had the pleasure of driving the same way I always do, up Wood Ranch Parkway to Madera Road, took Madera Road to the freeway. I'm very happy to report that Madera Road is driving a whole lot nicer these days, at least between Royal Avenue and Strathairn. So I want to thank you guys for getting that done, I want to thank the city staff for making that happen, and I also want to issue a challenge. Do me a favor, get the rest of the road paved from Royal down to the city limit. The other thing, one of the other things I wanted to talk about tonight was the Waste Management contract. Now, I got here late because of work tonight, and I think I may be the last speaker. There's not a whole lot that's left to be said. They've been a good partner to this community. I got to see that firsthand last year during a toy drive that was done for the children of our town over here at the Simi Valley Mall. They were out there supporting the toy drive and helping make sure that families locally were going to have the kind of Christmas that they deserve. I think it would be a mistake to not renew this contract. They've been a good partner to this community, we've heard it all, you know, from everybody else tonight. And, you know, if it's not broke, don't fix it. Finally, I'm a little dismayed, because I spoke about this same, this third issue last year at this time, and it happened again. My last name might fool you, make you think that I'm just, have a Polish heritage in me, but my mother's side of the family is Italian. And I saw that again tonight, the council chose to proclaim today Indigenous Peoples' Day. Well, as a proud Italian-American, I'd like to know why the city isn't also issuing a proclamation honoring Columbus Day. None of us, and I do mean none of us, including every member that's this council, would be here if Columbus had not convinced the king and queen of Spain to go explore the West. And turning around and taking Columbus Day and ignoring that in favor of Indigenous Peoples' Day, in my opinion, is equivalent to turning around and ignoring St. Patrick's Day in favor of National Snakes' Day to our Irish-American community. Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Mr. Mayor, that was the last speaker.
Okay, we're going to go to the council comments to your comments, and I'd like to make sure everybody understands that, based on the Brown Act, we're not allowed to give a long response, we're not allowed to debate with you, answer your questions when we give our brief comments. And it's not that we're being rude, it's just simply that we're staying within the confines of the state law. So understand that when we go through this process, please. And as soon as we're done with the council comments, we'll take a 10-minute break. And of course, without a doubt, you're all welcome and encouraged to stay and listen to the council comments and the questions that the council will have of staff and everything. So please stay if you can. So with that, we'll start with Council Member Lou Ebenos.
Thank you, Mayor. I will reiterate, with the mayor stated, we have to keep our comments very brief, so I cannot address everyone. But I want to thank everyone who came out tonight. I know it's a long day, many of us work full-time jobs, and then you came here today, and some of you have to get up really early, like at 3:00 or 4:00 in the morning, I know who you are. So thank you for taking time to come and just engage in your local government, it means so much. You are who we represent, we are your public servants, I just want to remind you of that. To Ms., I'll reserve all my comments about Waste Management for when we get to that item. Ms. Poitier, yes, I believe that transparency is important, I will be asking a lot of questions that many of you have brought up when we get to that issue. Mr. Lapper, all residents, even those we disagree with, are relevant, including you. So I just want to let you know that and encourage everyone. I will be bringing up an item for Centura and 10B. And Mr. Juan Miguel, we will be reaching out to you to help with the transportation routes and seeing about getting adults to help the kids use the bus. Mr. Klepper, I go to many, many events, they just happen to be ones that deal with social justice, the environment, and celebrating diversity, which is probably why you're not there. I would like to thank everyone who came out tonight and made comments, and I'll save the rest of my comments for when we talk about the Waste Management contract. Thank you much, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Kavanaugh?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, we'll keep it short, because I think most of the comments will be on our next agenda item. Mr. Hidago, Robbie, it was good to see you again tonight, and I like your comment about the bikes. We do, that is a good way to communicate with our community. For those of you that don't know, my father was LAPD, and the last five years, he rode a bicycle on Ventura Boulevard, and he covered his area, and he really enjoyed doing that, and it keeps him in good shape, especially when he was 50 when he started. So it's a good thing. And the officers liked the bikes. I know the Police Foundation, we also purchased them for the PD, so I think more bikes would be a great idea. On top of that, it's just a personal comment, my dad was a trash man for 10 years for the city of Glendale, so I'm proud of every single one of you, and I know how hard you work and how hard you work to support your families. So thank you to each and every one of you. And Tours, Lisa does a great thing of the Tours. Again, personal, my grandson was a trash man last Halloween, and he had his little tractor, and we decorated it as a Waste Management truck, and he just had the best time. So you guys are important to our community as a whole, to everybody. Really, seriously, you're one of our larger employers, and, you know, that's very important to our community. And to have the majority of you living here is also a positive. So I just want to thank each and every one of you for being here tonight. So thank you.
Councilmember Judge?
I just want to thank everybody for coming out and speaking and having, you know, this dialogue with us. I'm going to reserve my comments for Waste Management for that item, and that's the end of my comments.
Thank you. My comments... My comments is, first off, I have to go to...
I can go last, that's fine.
I stepped out of order, and I apologize.
That's okay, I can go last. Would you like me to go?
Mayor Proton, please go ahead.
Thank you. Actually, can I be honest? You guys are making me tired standing up this whole time, and I just wanted, kept wanting to say, "Come, sit down, have seats." But I understand. Thank you for being here, and I was just thinking we need to open up the division and have more chairs, and so thank you. I know, anyway, thank you for your sacrifice and standing here and being part of this discussion because it will be a very good discussion, I'm sure, and we do appreciate all that you've done for our community. And again, I will speak, reserve my comments for them. Three just quick, brief comments. In fact, it's so fun. I love to take notes of all that you've seen. I want you to know, I do have it all, and I go back and review. So just know that you're all, much appreciated. Just several quick comments. Mr. Doug Bamforth, I wanted you to know that I just, and I'm going to say this at the end, and by then I hope you're home in bed, but SCAG recently just passed a resolution. They finally recognized that water is so critical, and we can't talk about housing and everything else unless we find the way to make water work. And it was just a major resolution that was passed regionally, and so I'll share more of that with you, but you are absolutely on the right track. Mr. Rick Shaw, who discussed this concern about his, about the fire hazard behind his home, I'd love to speak with you more about that, and really, we have responsibility to make sure that that isn't continuing. So would love to speak with you more about that. And Mr. Juan Miguel, I loved your suggestion about closed captioning in Spanish and English, and so I would love to have further dialogue on the dais about that if there's a need for that. So again, reserve and look forward to further conversations about all that you have shared with us this evening. And I loved some of the personal stories about how, about your work environment and what this means to you. So thank you so much.
Okay, back where I started, inappropriately. First off, I want to thank everybody for the mature manner in which everybody made their comments and were polite to each other, not calling out, not interrupting in any way. It's very much appreciated from up here, from the entire council, when that occurs. Just from the few statements I heard, I'm very concerned about Santa Paula. I worked in Santa Paula for a long time, and I know the quality of people there. And I just am concerned by what you're saying, that Santa Paula is going to get hit very hard. And I just want to ask our city manager to be prepared to communicate with them if necessary and help them in any way possible to keep their rates down also, because it's a great community and a deserving community, and I'm not liking what I'm hearing about it. The other issue that I'd just like to touch on is transparency. I fully understand that as a citizen that is not in government, not in local government, it's sometimes hard to figure out how to maneuver and get the information. And I want you to know that, in my opinion, this is one of the most transparent places that you could possibly go. I mean, we all have our phone numbers posted, there's email, there's methods for you to get ahold of each council member, but staff is also in the same position. You call the city manager's office, you are going to get a reply, and if it's not the reply telling you exactly what you want, it'll certainly guide you to the website or something like that to obtain the information. So while the delivery may have a problem, it's certainly not the intent. It's very much not the intent. The intent is, I see it daily here, is to have an open facility that you can easily obtain any information you want. So please be aware of that. But I do understand, that's sometimes easier said than done, so I'm not criticizing anyone. And with that, I think I was last, so we'll take a 10-minute break, and we'll come back.
Ladies and gentlemen, we're about ready to start the meeting. Restart the meeting.
We have, do we have Patrick Medina on the line?
He's ready to go, Quinina.
Okay. I just didn't see him on screen.
Okay.
I told him not to leave him on screen.
One minute.
Okay. Do we have to dial him? Is he already there?
He's on Zoom, ready to go.
Okay, thanks.
He's been listening.
Okay.
It sure looks like we have plenty of seats now, so you don't have to stand back there unless that's your choice.
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, the next item on the agenda is 9B. This is the item that was moved by consensus of the council to be heard in place of item six. Consideration of a resolution approving an amended and restated agreement with G.I. Industries for solid waste services and introduction of an ordinance amending section 6-3.16 of the Simi Valley Municipal Code increasing the franchise fee for waste discharge collection. The reading of the ordinance and the resolution are as follows. Ordinance number 1344, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Simi Valley, amending section 6-3.16 of the Simi Valley Municipal Code increasing the franchise fee for waste discards collection. And resolution number 2022-55, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Simi Valley, approving and amended and restated franchise agreement with G.I. Industries to provide exclusive solid waste handling services. And Wes Yates and Joe Deacon are here to present this item.
Ready, gentlemen?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. Wes Yates will be providing a report on the item tonight.
Good evening, Mayor Mashburn, members of the City Council. This evening, for your consideration, is a resolution approving an amended and restated franchise agreement with G.I. Industries, as well as the introduction of an ordinance amending section 6-3.16 of the Simi Valley Municipal Code to increase the franchise fee for waste discard collection. On September 30th, 2013, the City Council granted an extension of the franchise agreement with G.I. Industries through December 31st, 2023. The current franchise agreement with G.I. Industries allows for renewal as long as the performance requirements outlined in Title VI, Chapter III of the Simi Valley Municipal Code are met, as well as AB 939 Waste Diversion Requirements, which require a 50% diversion rate from the landfill. From 2013 until the present, staff has reviewed G.I. Industries' performance and continues to find that they meet these requirements. The amended franchise agreement presented tonight for consideration adds multiple new benefits and changes for residential and commercial customers and to the City of Simi Valley as listed on pages three and four of the staff report. A partial listing of the features in the amended and restated franchise agreement includes: Extension of the term until December 2033; A reduction of the residential monthly rate to $28.29 starting in January 2024; And no rate increases until July 2025; A new door-to-door household hazardous waste collection program; An additional free landfill day; Expanded bulky item pickup; Added move-in and move-out service; Simplified bundled commercial rates inclusive of mandatory recycling programs; A new commercial rate for small business generators; An annual administrative fee of $150,000 payable to the city; Insured compliance with current state laws and regulations; No-cost service of city trash and recycling containers; No-cost collection of items abandoned in the city right-of-way; Increases the franchise fee paid to the city from 8% to 10%; And continuous collection of city-placed street containers, and more. The city currently has a memorandum of understanding, MOU, with Waste Management as a result of the landfill expansion in 2011. This MOU provides many additional services to the city, which are often included in hauling agreements, including: street sweeping of the city, a free household hazardous waste drop-off program valued at $60,000; Litter control along the 118 freeway; Funds for city beautification purposes; Monies toward the traffic signal synchronization; Funds for law enforcement training; $150,000 per year community project grant; Acceptance of wastewater treatment bio-solids at the landfill; And the use of alternate-fueled vehicles for waste hauling operations. Since these benefits are already provided through the landfill MOU, they are not included in the amended and restated agreement presented this evening. G.I. Industries has been a longstanding service provider and community partner with the city. Over the past 25-plus years that the city has had a franchise agreement with G.I. Industries, the company has demonstrated competencies in experience, training, credentials, resources, staffing, and other professional qualifications necessary to ensure satisfactory performance. G.I. Industries has proven itself to be a good corporate citizen and contributes to and participates in multiple community, nonprofit, and fundraising events. Current and past city councils have found that G.I. Industries provides a valued service to the Simi Valley community and its rates to be competitive. Simi Valley Municipal Code Section 6-3.16 provides that the City Council may award franchises for discard collection. Any such franchise shall be granted by the City Council upon a determination that the public convenience and necessity are served by the award of the franchise. While the City Council is the option to direct staff to solicit proposals for trash hauling services, the council should weigh the many factors presented tonight in its consideration of this agreement, including the sustainability of the amended and restated agreement. The lowest pricing may not result in the best service, and the best service may not result in the lower pricing. The request for proposal, RFP, process could prove to be lengthy and costly to administer with potentially diminished services. If the City Council should desire to pursue an RFP, staff would procure the services of a consultant with extensive knowledge in trash hauling RFPs to ensure that all necessary components are included. Staff recommends that the City Council adopt the resolution approving the amended and restated franchise agreement with G.I. Industries and introduce ordinance number 1344. This concludes the staff presentation, and we are available for any questions.
And, Mr. Mayor, I want to just add a couple of things. There's three corrections I need to make in the staff report, and one, two, two in the staff report, one in the resolution. We were originally dealing with a 10-year term on this contract. It ended up being 11 years because we went back and forth on the operative date. So on page two, in the first paragraph, it indicates it's a 10-year term. On page 11, on the second bullet point, we also indicate, I'm sorry, page three, we also indicated it was a 10-year term. And then on page 12, the first whereas in the resolution, we indicated it's a 10-year term. It's actually an 11-year term, so I wanted to put that out there.
Okay, I appreciate that. And can you articulate if there's an advantage or disadvantage to that? To the 10 versus the 11?
Actually, the only, I mean, the one advantage we would have is with the franchise agreement going from eight to 10, we'd actually get a higher franchise rate at the higher rubbish rate for the first year. So that's the only, that's the only advantage we would have. To us, there is no particular advantage to Waste Management.
Okay, thank you. So at this time, what I would ask is that we go to questions of staff, not comments at this point. Go questions and have staff answer those questions if possible. And we'll go that direction, and we will start with Councilmember Lou Ethanos.
Thank you, Mayor. I have several questions. Here's my first one, and these are from the public comments that the audience gave. Is there a difference between an RFP and an extension? And does it give different results? Why are we just doing an extension and not doing an RFP, and is that typical?
Let me jump in real quick before Joe and Wes answer that. The current franchise agreement with Waste Management gives them the right to ask for an extension. They have to ask for that extension at least 24 months in advance of the expiration date, and no more than 30 months in advance. 24 months in advance would have been in December of 2001, and that's when Waste Managing approached the city about doing an extension or renewal of the franchise agreement. So they do have the right to ask for that, and we follow through on their request. So if you guys want to address the extension versus RFP.
And whether or not it's typical?
Pardon me?
Whether or not that's typical, like, is this, you know, normal conduct of business? To just do an extension and not do an RFP for this type of service?
I think that's the option that the council has. RFP, it requires a bidding process. We, as we mentioned in Wes's presentation, it would require us to hire a professional to oversee it. We really don't have the type of expertise that this specialized request for proposal would require. Set up a bidding process to set up a fair platform for all potential proposers to submit, and a method of rating those proposals such that we can determine what the best offer is from a, from a potential service provider. Clearly, an extension is much simpler in terms of we have familiarity with the current provider. We have, as has been spoken here tonight, a great history of excellent service from them. And so, you know, it, the extension is a much simpler process. And, you know, arguably, it could lead to the same place after spending a lot of money and a lot of effort. Could lead to the same place, might lead to a different place, we don't know. But as was mentioned too, even if it leads to a different place, sometimes the evaluation of proposals is so tricky and so difficult, so fraught with detailed discernments, and that can't be set up in advance, per se. That constructing a fair system is almost impossible, and you may wind up thinking you're getting a better deal when, in fact, you're really not, so...
And how much would it cost? You said it would be costly to do an RFP, so how much would that cost? How much would that cost the city?
I would estimate a consulting contract would be about $150,000.
So just to get an RFP, just to go through the process because we'd have to get an outside consultant? It would cost the taxpayers $150,000?
Potentially, yes. And I would say over the last roughly 30 years, the RFP that was done in 1000 is the only one that I'm aware of that was done for waste hauling trash in Ventura County.
Okay, thank you. And I'm asking these questions not because I don't know all the answers, but because these are questions that were asked by residents and public comments, and I want to make sure that they get answered. I saw that there is, on page three of the report, there was a question asked about rate cap because of the concern of the hauler in Santa Paula. So on page three, if I'm correct, it does state that the rate increases shall be limited to the annual consumer price index and capped at 5%. So they can't, we won't get that 55% jump like they had in Santa Paula, is that correct?
That's correct. So even if the CPI say were 6.8% one year, the cap would kick in, and it would be capped at 5% for that year?
Okay, so residents can rest assured that this is in the contract?
Yes.
Okay. My next question is, how many other haulers, even if we did do an RFP, even if we had an extra $150,000 lying around, how many other haulers are there in the region? And would there be much of a price difference? Because one of the comments that was made was, you know, we all use the same trucks. We all, you know, use the same, you know, containers. So would there be much of a price difference? Is it worth $150,000 to get the RFP?
Well, again, we do have a chart here, more than happy to distribute it to the council, of the current rates in Ventura County for the standard cart service. This will indicate the, you can draw your own conclusions on what the rates are for trash haulers in Ventura County. Yeah.
Okay, and just for transparency, because the audience can't see this, the rates range in cities from 2436 all the way up to 3922. And there's one rate that does not include organics cart collection. So I just want to make that, I know you guys can't see it, and this is too small to see, but I just want you to see what that is because that was not in the report. I have another question. Are the other haulers that are available that I'm seeing on this list? And I see Harrison, G.I., City, Athens are the ones on this list. These are all the servicers for Ventura County. Are the other haulers unionized? Do you, I'm sorry, you may not know that answer, but do you happen to know?
The city one is the City of Oxnard, believe they are. Harrison, I'm not sure.
Okay, and you're not sure about the other, the other ones?
Athens.
Athens is not.
Is not.
Okay. And then I have one more question, I'm sorry. My screen went blank. Hold on. Thank you for your patience. On page three of the report, it says: Customer education and fine-free period related to organics until January 1st, 2024. What does that mean? Can you explain that to me? Does that mean after January 1st, 2024, if people are doing stuff they shouldn't with organics, are they going to get fined? Like, is this a grace period? Is this part of the education component that, you know, I heard Justin talking about? You know, like, we're going to educate people so they know you shouldn't do this, and this is like the grace period? Can you explain that to me?
Yeah, so starting January 1st, 2024, that's when the actual law takes some effect in terms of enforcement by state, you know, requirement. So with the fines, we never want to start with fines. We're going to try to figure out how to kind of, you know, get a warning system in. But how the law is written that the first violation accompanies a fine. So that's where, you know, term violation. But that kicks in January 1st, 2024, and that's our requirement to enforce it.
But as you mentioned, between now and already starting, we are actively educating in order to be prepared.
Okay, and then, I'm sorry, Mayor, thank you for your patience. I do just want to address questions. I have two more questions, if you don't mind. I want to address the issue that was brought up. On page three, it says that there's a freeze of current rates through December 31st, 2023 of $34.82 a month. And then it says effective January 1st, 2024, there's a rate decrease to $28.29 per month. And then there's going to be no rate increases for 18 months until July 1st, 2025. So the question is, why are we waiting for the rate decrease until January 1st, 2024? Does this have to do with the compliance with SB 1383? Is there other stuff that's coming online that Waste Management is doing that, you know, we have to wait for the rate decrease until that time? And I don't know if you can answer that question, or someone from Waste Management can answer that question, but that was a question that was asked by someone in the audience.
This is the proposed rate structure by Waste Management.
Okay. I don't know, can we ask Waste Management questions?
Yeah, let me, huh? Can we ask the representative? Okay, is, I think it'd probably be a Waste Management representative who would like to answer that question. Come on down.
Good evening. I understand the question at hand, and there's actually someone that has been through this process that has helped us get to the rate structure that we're at and industry knowledge, and really understands the forecasting of what's coming up and our sustainability model in the current proposal that we're issuing tonight. So if you don't mind, I'm going to actually ask Doug Corcoran to come up and really break that down because he's really been... he's really been the process to that, to where we're at today.
Thank you.
Thank you, Doug Quirker and Waste Management. Or actually, I guess we're WM now. Yeah, I'm gonna have to remember that. So the question is, why are we waiting until 2024 for the rate decrease? Is that the question? Well, there's an initial outlay of capital and programs and everything that is going to cost us money to roll that out. So we wanted to get that while we were still at the rates we're at right now. And then once we kind of get there and we're stable, then we're able to say, okay, let's drop that down and kind of hit the reset button and then go from there.
So you're investing in the infrastructure that makes Waste Management a safe facility, like the liners, like the infrastructure, the pipes? That's what that money is for?
We're going to do that anyway, but there's going to be a rollout of containers for organic services because organic services are going to be mandatory across all customers, and that includes food waste, commercial food waste especially. That's the most difficult part of these rollouts. The residential's fairly easy because they already have a green waste cart, and they can just begin putting food waste in with the green waste, and then that can get sorted out at the landfill. The commercial is going to have to get that service added, and they don't have it right now. And there's an expense that we would incur for the containers to roll that out.
Okay. I expect it as such, but I just wanted the public to hear it. I know there was a lot of requests for transparency. I know I don't want to waste $150,000 on an RFP, but I want to be able to answer all the questions for the audience. So thank you for answering that question with regard to the cost and the investment in infrastructure. Thank you so much. And those are my questions. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Mayor Proton Lister.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate the report. Obviously, well, obviously, as I understand, our role today is either to approve a contract or to postpone the approval of it, or to discuss another option, which is maybe the RFP option. Is that, is that accurate summary of what our options are this evening? Is that correct?
I think that's pretty accurate.
Okay. I'm trying to, and I appreciate the report. It was very interesting to understand a little bit of the historical evolution of waste management and waste hauling in our community. If I understand, there were two waste haulers that began in August of 93, or at least that's when the contract began, Canejo Enterprises and Anderson Rubbish. Is that correct?
Yes, and they, my guess is they were hauling even before then, but that's the current contract's birthdate, if you will.
So if I understand, WM never assumed the full contract for all of Simi Valley until about four years ago. Is that, is that an accurate statement?
That's correct. Anderson Rubbish was still operating until 2017.
2017, okay. So WM has become, and help me understand, the terms are thrown out, GI Industries versus WM. When did GI Industries become WM, or vice versa?
I may need some help on that. I don't think we put that in the report, and the data escapes me, but it was, it wasn't all that long ago that Waste Management bought GI Industries, but I don't know, I don't know exactly why.
Okay. So, and I'm just trying to understand contextually, because we have heard lots of great comments from people who have historical, have been, in fact, you guys can answer the question better than him, I'm sure. Would you like to answer? So those who have spoken, so those who've spoken about working in the community forever and ever have probably did so initially as either Anderson or GI Industries, and then they became WM. Is that accurate?
Yes. So, yeah, you know, it's funny, because when I started out, I was always the youngest guy in the room, and now all of a sudden I'm the historian.
Just hate that?
Yeah.
I'm trying to remember when the Acidurians sold to Waste Management. I don't remember, it was late 80s?
Yeah. So here's, actually, here's how it worked. There was Waste Management, we owned the landfill, but we had no hauling in the county because at the time you couldn't have both. And then there was GI, and there was Anderson in Simi Valley. And GI was, GI Industries was owned by the Acidurians. Well, they ended up selling to a company called Western Waste. Western Waste was subsequently acquired by a company called USA Waste. And then Waste Management, which at the time we were the largest in the country, and we still are, USA Waste had these guys who ran it were very creative financially. And they actually put together a package to purchase Waste Management. So Waste Management got purchased by USA Waste. They kept the name Waste Management because USA Waste at the time had about $150 million a year in business, and we were billions. And they said, boy, what's going to be cheaper, switching all the trucks to USA Waste or switching a few trucks from USA to Waste Management? So that's what we call that. So actually, GI was acquired by USA Waste before Waste Management. Then that happened. So it was about 1998. A few years ago, the Anderson family decided that they would want to sell and get out of the business, and then we purchased them, you know, through the GI Waste Management, USA Waste, corporate soup, I guess.
I don't know if that helps. That's what happened.
That was clear as mud. That was perfect, perfect.
This is why I'm the historian. I confuse everybody.
That's good. And I guess what I'm trying to understand, so really, in terms of WM or Waste Management, which is now said it has to be called WM, and I understand that. So WM has, in its entirety for Simi Valley, maybe four or five years, has controlled the full, I mean, has the full contract?
That sounds about right.
Okay. Is there advantage or disadvantage in having economies of scale, I mean, I realize you're a large corporation, by having it blended, melded together? I know this has been separate contracts for many years.
Well, there can be economies of scale. I don't think the, in the case of the Anderson acquisition, that the economies of scale were really that substantial, because Waste Management had the lion's share of the business in the city. So we acquired some more residential and a few other things. But theoretically, yeah. I mean, you know, it could be economies of scale. It'll, I think probably you'll see it going forward because there's a lot of investment required for SB 1383. And instead of a small company having to bear that burden, now you've got this company that we've got the whole, if you choose us, I mean, I don't want to get ahead of myself. But if you do elect to extend the contract, we'll have the whole city, and it'll be easier for us to absorb it than it would be for a smaller company.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate that response. Thank you. So Mr. Deacon, I just want to make sure that we're clear here, that this discussion tonight is for the waste hauling portion, that the MOU that we have with WM with a landfill, which has been wonderful, exceptional, et cetera, that would not change, that regardless of what is decided tonight, that is in place, all those wonderful benefits and all the things that we receive with WM landfill, et cetera. Because in essence, we're talking two separate companies or entities. Is that, is that fair to say?
Yes. We discussed them both in the staff port to give you a complete picture of our relationship with WM or Waste Management.
So it was there for relationship purposes?
But you are correct in your statement that the MOU for the landfill is independent of the question before you tonight. So, and it will be sustained regardless of how you decide on this franchise agreement for the hauling services by WM. It's independent, unaffected by your decision.
Okay. I appreciate that. I do have a few, I'll just run through these questions quickly. Let me first discuss the franchise fee. It is going from 8% to 10%. Is that correct? So 8%, what is, is the terms the same? It's a quarterly payment, I believe? Is that correct? Or is, that's what it's going to be? Is that, what are we doing? Is that what we have now?
I believe so.
Wes is saying yes.
Wes is an expert.
Thank you, Wes, for answering that decisively. What does that, moving from 8% to 10%, what is the increase to the city? I mean, what is, what is the revenue, for annual revenue that the city will receive?
It's just under $2 million annually, so the 2% increase is roughly an additional $400,000 per year.
Got it. Okay. So from there, we can extrapolate the value of the contract for the whole company, et cetera, over 11 years, et cetera. Okay, fair enough. Tell me quickly about the senior discount. I understand we currently have it. How is it now implemented? How will, or is that being changed in some way?
Wes might be able to add more. It's our understanding, Waste Management, excuse me, WM administers that program, requires proof of the applicant in terms of their age. But exactly what they require is proof and how they process that application.
So is it age-based, or is it also income-based? Or is it entirely age-based?
It's my understanding it's entirely age-based, and to continue, so the applicant would bring a copy of their driver's license and show that, and then based, you know, on their address, their service address, then that 10% discount applies.
Got it. And if they don't have a driver's license, probably a birth certificate would work.
Some form of official document.
That's fine. I do see you. Okay, very good. Help me understand the CPI caps, because I don't want to be, I understand that there, that it is being capped at 5%. And the CPI is based not on local consumer price index, not on the federal consumer pricing index. Would you explain how that works and the carryover that's written in the contract?
I'm not sure I got the question.
Well, no, I'm trying to understand. I understand it's being capped at 5%, but if the CPI were 7%, then the additional 2% could be carried into the next year. Is that, if that's how I read the contract correctly? Is that correct?
I don't know. That doesn't sound right.
Okay, I'll have to give you pages now.
Thank you.
Page, page 880, that's where it talks about annual adjustment limits.
Councilmember Lister?
Yes.
I do have Patrick Munoz with Rutan and Tucker. He's the one that helped.
So he can, gotcha.
He might be able to respond. Patrick, are you there?
I'm going to bring him up on Zoom.
So the way the rollover works is that if there is 5%, I'm sorry, there's 5% cap, so if inflation were, you know, CPI were 7%, one year, the next year was 2%, the extra 2% would be carried over to the second year, so the second year would be 4%?
So that's correct. So I am right. So, yeah, it's the annual adjustment limitation. So, and I'm mindful that we're in inflationary times, possibly, that theoretically, although this 5% cap will keep us, it could be carried over. I would like to, I know it also speaks of extraordinary adjustments, which also may be what's happened in Santa Paula, is what I'm guessing. But could you explain how that applies in this contract and what that could mean?
Real quickly, Councilmember and all the other councilmembers and Mayor Mayor Proton, I just want to make sure to introduce Patrick Munoz. He is on standby. He's with Rutan and Tucker. He has over 30 years of experience dealing with contracts with different cities throughout the state of California. And so just as a matter of introduction, I wanted you to know that he's on standby. I mean, he's available to answer.
And he's answering wonderfully. Thank you very much.
And he's ready to answer the questions.
So Patrick, could you explain about extraordinary increases that could be subject and what, how that works, please?
Certainly. So there's really two different categories of extraordinary adjustments. The idea is that there will be effectively a cost of living increase every year that will occur automatically. That's what the CPI inflator will accomplish. But from time to time, things have happened in the industry that are kind of out of the ordinary. They're not things that we think of as, you know, your normal CPI kind of increases. So for instance, a few years ago, there was a requirement that all solid waste collection trucks had to go to natural gas as opposed to gasoline. And so that had a huge impact in the industry. And so there was a lot of request for extraordinary rate increases because of that. So when, when things like that happen, the hauler can come to the city council and request an increase. City council has the absolute discretion whether to grant it or not, taking into account, you know, all the different factors that you might consider to be fair. And sometimes cities say no. They say, hey, those are the risks that occur when you want a long-term contract. And other times, the city council will say, yes, it makes sense to them to give the increase. The other category of extraordinary increases are unique circumstances where a governmental agency has done something that causes a specific increase. So for instance, if there was a new program mandated by the state of California, then the hauler would be entitled to a reasonable cost adjustment to take that, to take that into account. If the city council asks the hauler to do something very specific that had cost implications, then that would be taken into account. So those kinds of increases would be something that the council would have to grant. But again, there'd be a discussion about what is the fair increase to account for those.
Thank you, Patrick.
And real quick, if I can address that, there, that provision, I believe, is in the existing franchise, the extraordinary increase or adjustment. And then on the carryover, it also goes the other way. If there is a decrease that is carried over, that can carry over to the next year also, if a decrease in the CPI.
Give me, help me understand what that means. So...
If the CPI decreased by 6%?
You mean a negative?
Negative, yes.
Wouldn't that be lovely, guys? Prices?
You never know. We're not there yet.
Okay. Thank you. I understand. Okay. Thank you. That's it for questions for now. I appreciate it.
I just have a quick, easy one. Thank you. Well, maybe not quick and easy. We're talking a lot about our consumer, and so I wanted to focus in a little bit on our commercial customers, because those are our businesses and we need to protect them also. So I noticed added benefits to our commercial benefit, or our commercial customers, we're maintaining the 2021 commercial rates. Do we know for how long? It doesn't specify just in this one area, or are they, those going to be consistent with the same CPI increase? Is that a Waste Management question?
They'll stay until January of '24.
Okay. And then at that, at that time, they will adjust?
Joe's giving you the look.
I know. It's on...
It's in the chart.
It's just on page four, and underneath the proposed residential rates.
The rates don't change until January of '24. Is that correct?
Go into the 2025 year. They're going to stay the same. And like you said, additional benefits by adding some more options that we didn't have before.
And that's July of 2025 is when they're going to get their first rate review after the new contract.
Okay. And those rate reviews will be at the same 5% cap?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. That's what I wanted to know. And I did notice the other benefits that we're adding, which will be very good for some of our consumers, or our commercials, especially our small businesses. So thank you for that. That was it for me.
Okay. Councilmember and Judge, do you have any questions? Okay, this time, let's move to comments. I have no questions, by the way. Thank you for the fine report. And at this time, we'll go to comments, and we'll start with Councilmember Lou Evinos.
I have a comment and then a motion whenever you're ready. I, it was wonderful to see so many of you come out from the community to support Waste Management. They truly are a partner. Yes, I was there at 3:00 in the morning when they unionized, and there were no hard feelings. They were, I was there in an individual capacity. But hearing the stories of the college program, of how your families, you're working with your moms and your brothers and your sisters, and I mean, it's really cool to see that, to see how you support the community, the trails, the Boy Scouts, the Girl Scouts, all of the nonprofits that came out, business owners, individuals. I mean, you can see the relationship that you have in the community here, and their deep roots, and the fact that you have so many of your employees here. And I know that they have to be back at work at 3:00, 4:00 in the morning is really a testament to your employees and how you treat your employees with respect and with dignity. It does matter to me. I am... with respect and with dignity. It does matter to me. I am an employee myself. I worked two other jobs besides this one. It does matter when you're union. It does matter when you know that you can go to the doctor for 20 bucks, that you can get your prescription for $10. And that's a huge testament to you and what you do in the community, Waste Management. And, you know, I know there's, there's, you know, we don't want to go through the process of an RFP and spend $150,000 when I'm 99.9% sure we're gonna end up right where we are right now. I ask the tough questions. I'm that councilmember. I have no problem doing that, because I do demand transparency and accountability. In the end, again, I am a public servant, and I'm beholden to those of you who elected me and those of you that I serve. And so that's why I ask the tough questions. But in the end, I end up in the same place that I, I had a feeling I was gonna end up in anyways. And I do, you know, look over contracts, and I look for all the kinds of details to see how is it gonna impact our residents, our commercial, our businesses, and what is best for our community. When you have a good thing, you don't want to ruin it. You want to continue that relationship. And there is something to be said for the investment in the relationship that the community has with Waste Management and vice versa. So I will be supporting and making a motion once everyone makes their comments to support both of these resolutions. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Kavanaugh, comments?
Sorry, thank you. Cut me off guard a little bit.
You are from Royal.
I went to the best high school here in town. Thank you very much. I am outnumbered up here, but I at least say that. I did want to point out or reiterate the difference between the RFP and the extension. I know there were some concerns by some audience members and in the public that we were not being transparent with that. But with the current contract allowing that extension to be requested by Waste Management, I think that alleviates that concern for some people, saving the money for the RFP. I work on RFPs on both sides of it, being in the banking industry. So if you don't have to do one, it's much easier on everybody. It's less, it's less costly, saves time and energy. And again, if it's not broke, why fix, or if it's not, yeah, if it's not broken, don't fix it. There are other haulers in the area. I've talked to different people. I don't believe they're as good as our current hauler. I think Waste Management is number one in our area, maybe in the region. And I think a lot of that has to do with, you know, Lisa and Justin and Mark and Scott and everyone that works there. You guys all do a great job. The landfill's there for a tour anytime. I've taken my grandson. I know the scouts have gone there. They're open to anybody. Lisa does a great job, and so thank you, Lisa. And I think Waste Management is a fantastic partner for our community, and I don't see any reason to change that. So thank you.
Councilmember Judge.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to say you guys are great. Waste Management is one of the most, I can't even imagine a better community partner to have. You are all over our events, the Roundup, the, when we had Cajun Festival, you guys are always there. I mean, I don't ask a lot of questions on the dais, because I don't want to waste a lot of your time. I know the assignment. I did my homework. I was in Vegas this weekend in a bowling tournament where all my buddies and my wife were down gambling. I was sitting in the hotel room reading this contract. Yeah, it's 110 pages long. And that's just one of the contracts, because they put all three of them in there. So, yeah, I'm fully on board with this project. I hope it goes well for you guys, and I want to see you guys continue to do the good work that you do. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mayor Protim, Lister.
Thank you, Mayor. I will tell you that I'll be 100% honest. I, in fact, our city, our city manager, Brian Gabor, will tell, tell you that I stormed into his office Thursday saying, why did I know about this? Why didn't I see this whole contract? Why are you only giving us five days? This is, and so he, and I, he will tell you that I, I had some real misgivings, because I think it's critical that, this is such an important, huge contract. It just is. I thought it was critical that we have the opportunity to look at it carefully through a lens. Simi Valley and Thousand Oaks are about the same population, so we're, we're in the second or third largest market in Ventura County. And so obviously, it, it's a market that, that is, isn't, that would be, I think, beneficial to a company. And I want to make it very, very clear that I have been so impressed with Waste Management. I've been impressed with the tour of the landfill. I was impressed with touring your, your recycling facility in Silmar San Fernando. Amazing things that I've seen. And I, and I know what you do in this community. And so that was actually hard for me to separate. I thought, okay, I gotta, I'm also representing the taxpayer. I've got to make sure that I, that my wonderful feelings for this company are separate from what I'm costing, what our taxpayers are paying for, and what service they are receiving. And so I agonized over that all weekend. I just want you to know that. I looked at it very, very carefully. And I will tell you also, I'm an economist. My degree's in economics. Okay, I'm not really an economist. I have a degree in economics. Can I say that I'm an economist? Okay, I haven't worked as official one. But I believe in the free market system and the value of healthy competition, where monopoly doesn't exist. And so that was also it. And so the lack, as I perceived, of opportunity for this contract was concerning to me. And when I did the math, I'll be honest, if you, if you work backwards, if the, if the city receives $2 million on the franchise fee, that means it's a $20 million annual contract. That means it's $220 million for 11 years. If it's over 20 years, it's over a $400 million contract. So obviously, this is, this is one of the largest contracts that the city works with. It just is. It's, this is a huge contract. So I'm just trying to make it, make it very clear how, how important this, this contract is. So my question to myself, is this the best deal for the residents? And so I wrestle, I thought, okay. And I want also make it very clear that I, well, let me jump down to the discussion of an RFP. I recognize you don't necessarily, it's how, it's how it's written, it's how it's reviewed. There's a variety of things. There's no guarantee that you'll get a better outcome. And I actually kind of came to the conclusion that very possibly, because of what transpired in Thousand Oaks, that there's that awareness of that bottom line price, that possibly that helped in the discussions. I don't know that. But maybe that was, was thought of as things were being discussed. But I don't think at this point, the RFP process would be fair, because in essence, it's tainted. You've already presented your contract, and then, and then just to take it to an RFP at this point now, you're, you know, it's impossible to get a, RFP only works if everyone comes to the table at the same time, in my, in my mind. So, and I also recognize too, that we're in inflationary time. And I'm sorry if I'm going on too long, Mayor. Thank you for, for allowing me to keep rambling for a few more minutes. Maybe one more minute. I also recognize that if we are in inflationary time right now, prices could potentially go up. And what this does do is it locks, locks things in now. It freezes it at a time when, when who knows what's going on with that CPI index. In fact, Patrick can tell you, and the attorney can tell you, that I was lobbying for using the federal CPI index. I don't like the fact that we're using the California CPI index, because prices here on gas seem to be going really high, and that's built into that. But I was told that that's not a possibility. And so, anyway, I, so I, so coming back to the matter, I think if I, in the ideal world, I'd say, can't you just give it one, can't we bring this back in two weeks? Let the neighborhood councils look at it. Let everyone look and look at it for a few, few more days, just so that they can ask all the possible questions, because five days is not a lot to review a contract. In the ideal world, that's what I would want. But I don't know that's where we're going to go tonight, and so we'll see where the voting goes. But I will tell you that I am very impressed with what, what WM does. Thank you for what you do to our community and do for our community. And in all of this, this internal discussion I've been having, I thought to myself, we go through that whole process, but where would I go, end up voting in the end? And I come back to what I know and love and appreciate in this community. And so I'll leave it at that. How's that for security discussion logic? I'm done.
Thank you. First of all, I want to echo pretty much what Councilmember Lou Evinos said, that, and I'll say it in my words, I look out here and I see our community. I see Simi Valley. I see residents of Simi Valley in the, the oovy groovy fluorescent vest. And it's, it's so good to be talking to Simi Valley people, knowing some of you haven't yet, you know, gained the knowledge to come on over to Simi Valley and live, but that's fine. And I would like to reiterate that I am concerned about Santa Paula, because I, I care about those folks over there. And I, we want to look at them in the future, and if there's any way we can help, let's do that. I had a couple of points I wanted to make that I didn't say when the, after the speakers. One of the speakers said, we should be going, like looking at a used car, going different places, looking, looking, looking. Well, I didn't have to go very far. If you go to Thousand Oaks and see what this other company did to that beautiful city, or a beautiful part of the city, it's, it's just amazing. They turned a beautiful building in a great area right by the Thousand Oaks Mall. They turned it into, I've learned to always call it a landfill here. Over there, it's a dump. And it certainly wasn't Waste Management that did that. And so, yeah, I shopped, and I don't need to shop anymore after I saw what happened over there. So with that, I want to go, I know Ruth wants to make a motion, and give her that opportunity. But thank you very much, and keep up the good work. And I'm the goofy guy in a Dodge truck that waves to all the trash trucks when they go by.
And if I just make a quick comment in Spanish, gracias a todos los que vinieron hoy en la noche. Yo sé que es tarde, trabajaron todo el día y tienen que levantarse temprano. Así que gracias por venir y sepan que nosotros apoyamos ustedes, los trabajadores aquí, por Waste Management. Les agradecemos todo el trabajo que hacen ustedes. Here's my motion. I move to adopt resolution number 2022-55, approving an amended and restated franchise agreement and introduce ordinance number 1344, amending section 6-3.16 of the Simi Valley Municipal Code, increasing the franchise fee for waste discards collection.
Second.
Just real quickly, there was a quick amendment on that, Brian. So we changed it from eight to 10. So as amended?
As amended. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, and we'll call for the vote.
The motion passes unanimously.
And you're welcome to sit through the rest if you like.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
I just thanked him. I just thanked him. No, don't worry about it. He said...
She's standing?
Yeah. He said, he said glad to have helped.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, next item on the agenda is item seven, the consent calendar. And there are three resolutions for your consideration this evening. Consent item six, resolution number 2022-52, a resolution of the city council of the city of Simi Valley, accepting the public improvements for track number 5978, located at southeast corner of Los Angeles Avenue and Madera Road. And consent item seven, resolution number 2022-53, a resolution of the city council of the city of Simi Valley, confirming and renewing the proclamation of the existence of a local emergency. And resolution number 2022-54, a resolution of the city, of city council of the city of Simi Valley, confirming the existence of a local emergency and authorizing remote teleconference meetings of the legislative bodies of the city of Simi Valley pursuant to Brown Act provisions.
Okay. Any questions on the consent calendar or a motion?
Mayor, I'd like to pull consent items four and five.
Four and five pulled. Okay. Anybody else?
I will motion to approve one, two, three, six, and seven at this time.
A second.
Okay, motion to go one, two, three, six, and seven. Call for the vote.
The motion passes unanimously.
Okay, questions on number four?
Hi. I wanted to know why we are doubling. The original term on page one of the report said it was for $335,000. And now the new total not to exceed amount is $670,000, which is quite a bit more. So can you explain to me why we're doubling it? Because I really did not see a justification for giving so much money. And I saw that it was, you know, they looked at the, the value of the city's portfolio on page two, but that's assuming that there was growth and not that, you know, that there wasn't growth. So can you explain that?
Well, the original term was for five years, and this is an additional five years. They're actually holding their prices?
Okay, so it's the same price, and they're just extending it?
Correct.
Okay. I'm sorry. It was, it was late when I was reading this. Okay.
You know, Ruth, that I wrote in the margin that this is gonna make you feel happy because you've been concerned.
Okay, and the percentage of the, it says the costs are shared across the three funds, general fund, waterworks, and sanitation. Those percentages match the share of their portfolio, is that correct? Yes?
Yeah.
Okay, so it's the same percentage, 63, 26, 11%. Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
Do you want me to ask a question for five?
Sure.
Okay. Sorry, I had my question in here. Well, we had, I have two questions. So the first question is, we had a comment from Mr. Hidalgo, who's still in the, in the, in the audience, that there might be a lower price for this contract. So my question is, why did we not put an RFP out for this?
Well, we went with a cooperative, and the cooperative puts out an RFP, and then we just can piggyback onto that.
I, I would question, I mean, I, I don't know what Mr. Hidalgo looked at, but there are requirements in government procuring in terms of insurance, deliverable. We are buying 100 and how many? 149 computers. I don't, who knows if they could deliver 149 computers. So it, it's very possible, but...
Like, does this include a warranty, or?
Includes all of that.
Okay, that's...
Yes, it's an all encompassing contract.
Okay, that's what I wanted to know, because that would justify the extra cost for me if there's, if it includes a warranty.
Yeah, $10 difference, it probably would.
Okay.
And if I could add to, my math shows that it's $1,160 per computer. And if I could add too, my math shows that it's $1,160 per computer, which I thought was a reasonable computer cost in terms of, so that was also, I thought was.
Yeah, it's actually $1,089 plus tax.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, I, I just kind of wanted an explanation of the, I know someone had asked me about the, you know, what is a cooperative purchasing agreement and how does that work? And I said, "Well, I'll just let staff explain it," and then I'll ask a question. Okay, I'm good. Thank you for the answer.
Motion on four and five.
May I approve Consent Items 4 and 5?
Second.
Call for the vote.
The motion passes unanimously. Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, the next item on the agenda is Item 8A, Second Reading of Ordinance Number 1343, approving a city-initiated municipal code text amendment Z-S-2021-0004, to amend portions of Title IX of the Simi Valley Municipal Code to provide procedures of voluntary law mergers and a determination that the amendment is exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act. The reading of the ordinance is as follows. Ordinance Number 1343 and ordinance of the City Council of the City of Simi Valley, approving a city-initiated municipal code text amendment Z-S-2021-0040004, to amend portions of Title IX of the Simi Valley Municipal Code, to provide procedures for the voluntary law mergers and a determination that the amendment is exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act.
Okay, questions? Any, this, this remembers the second reading.
I move to adopt Ordinance Number 1343.
Second.
Motion second, call for the vote.
You did too. There it is.
The motion passes unanimously. Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, next on the agenda is Item 9A, consideration of distribution of fiscal year 2021 budget surplus funds in accordance with the fund balance policy. And City Manager Gabler is presenting this item.
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, back in April of this year, the City Council approved a fund balance policy wherein it distributes the budget surpluses from prior fiscal years to three different categories that allows for expenditures to take place. The categories include the Retirement Investment Fund, the Infrastructure Investment Fund, and a Contingency Fund. Looking at the budget surplus that, that took place in budget year 2021, the city ended up with an $8 million surplus, which divided out based upon the percentages that were provided of $3.2 million to the Retirement Investment Fund, 3.2, a similar amount to the Infrastructure Investment Fund, and 1.6 million to the Contingency Fund. Staff has done some analysis on the use of these funds and are making a recommendation, in particular on the Retirement Investment Fund. Staff is recommending use, using the entire amount, the 3.2 million dollars, to do an additional discretionary payment to pay down our, our CalPERS UAL. Attached on page seven of the staff report is the changes that would occur as a result of that. This 3.2 million dollars over a 20-year period would result in a $5.8 million savings to the city. On the Infrastructure Investment Fund, staff is recommending a division of the funds to, $2 million to fund the radio communications project that will be coming forward to the, to the City Council in the next, probably about 60 to 90 days. And the remaining balance of 1.2 million dollars to the major streets projects, continuing to invest in our major streets in the city. And lastly, on the Contingency Fund, we had 1.6 million dollars available. Staff is recommending two expenditures from that. One is the re, hazardous remove, a tree removal of $175,000, although we are bringing an item forward to the City Council at the next, at the next council meeting regarding this. The trees that are along Sinaloa, on the west side of Sinaloa Road, south of Royal Avenue, we've done an assessment of that, those 63 trees. And an arborist has indicated that these are hazardous trees that do need to be removed. So we've got a rough estimate on what that cost would be. It is an unbudgeted item that we would be looking to budget for in this, through this contingency fund, and there's a little bit of a dialogue in the staff report on, on the bottom of page three. And then we'll be coming back to you next, at our next meeting with a full report on that expenditure. The other item on that, on the contingency expenditure is the $700,000 set aside for flood hazard and risk assessment studies. Over the last several years, staff has worked with various developers and applicants regarding flood hazard analysis in the city. The, the city is mapped based, mapped by FEMA and other entities which identify the flood, the flood hazard areas of the city. As developers have gone through and remapped those areas based upon current technologies, we're discovering that most of the city is not actually in a flood area. However, we have to go through the analysis to prove to FEMA that that is the case, in which case, what that would do is if we're able to remove most of the city out of these flood areas, that negates the property owner from acquiring or for paying annual flood insurance. So it's a tremendous savings to the residents of Simi Valley in the long run, to those areas that can be taken out. And it updates the mapping based upon current technologies, so we have a better understanding of where the flooding could take place in the city if we were to encounter any large 150 or 100-year floods, similar to what may be taking place in Florida through the last hurricane. So we're recommending a $700,000 expenditure from that. That study is about a three to five-year project. And well, before we, before any expenditures are made, we would still have to have a consultant under contract, and we'll bring, we would bring that forward to the City Council for that to move forward. This is just identifying funding for that project. With that, I'd been more than happy to answer any questions.
I have a question. You, you mentioned the trees on Sinaloa, and I, I think they've already been designated as hazardous.
That, we have an arborist report that has indicated that the majority of 63 out of 66 trees are, are hazardous.
Okay, my, my concern and question is, is as we move on in the year, it's more likely that we'll get into the east winds.
Yes.
And since we've already identified those trees as being hazardous, we, we have. I just.
Sorry, Mayor, if I, if I, if I may, I.
Yeah, go ahead.
I'd like to probably stop that conversation as it relates to those trees, if it's possible. As it relates to, you can talk about the fiscal matter, but I don't want you to designate them as hazardous, because we don't know. We don't want that used against you.
Yes, okay, well, I see what you're saying. May I ask the question of estimated or guesstimated time, once it's determined to remove them, how long it'll be?
So you'll have a, we'll be coming to you on next week, next meeting, on the 24th, with the analysis on this. Is a contract already in place, Ron?
We're going to try and use the existing tree.
Existing tree, okay. So we, we could have, we, we potentially could start this work for the next 30 days.
Okay, and that's all I was trying to say is, I think that could be of importance.
Yes, and that's, that's as moving as fast as reasonably possible, which is a good thing.
Yes. Thank you, that's my only question. Did you have a question?
I do, thank you very much. And I, I just, first to start, I, I very much like, like this idea of using, of making additional discretionary pension fund payment. I think, given our uncertain investment times, that that is the most prudent step. So I first, first want to state that. Let me ask you specifically about the, well, first of all, let me, yeah, let's talk about the, the contingency fund or, the, as far as the flood plain, $700,000 to study. Does that cover the entire remaining area of, because I know that, I know that we've had to, it's been analyzed, I shouldn't say piecemeal, but as industries come in, they've, and they've, and wanted to build, they've captured additional areas. And I know that.
Correct.
A colleague of mine, an employee of mine, she was, she fought to finally get out of the flood plain and made a huge difference in her insurance payments. So is it the rest, will this be the rest of the city or is there just, is it just?
It would be the rest of the city.
Okay, so it would cover, excellent, okay.
Yep.
With regards to those eucalyptus trees, and I've driven that many, many times to go to the church up at the top of that hill. I love those trees, they're beautiful looking. And I drove it today, just so I would, so I could have this conversation. First of all, are the residents who back up to that property, are they aware of this discussion and they are, are they in favor of this? Has there been any notification or is that premature?
It, it, it has not, we have not had that discussion with those residents yet, although we have several claims from those residents, from damage from those trees.
Okay.
So they, they are likely aware of the problem.
Okay, and as I drove, you can see there's quite a few, older eucalyptus trees that, that the bark is shedding, et cetera. There's quite a few newer ones mixed in. Is it the intention to remove the entire string or would we leave, or is it based on health of the, of the trees?
It's based on the health of the tree.
Okay.
Yeah. I mean, we'll, we'll keep what we can, but if there are, if there are diseases, we have to take that into consideration, that it could move into a healthy tree.
Okay, I, I would, that's what I'm advocating for, because some look very healthy, but I'm.
Yep.
Okay, very good. Let me just quickly talk infrastructure.
Yes.
When I think of infrastructure, I think of roads and, but we're saying that radios are infrastructure.
It's part of the city's infrastruc, we, we consider it that.
And, and that's what I came to in my personal discussion, so thank you. If this, if we cover 2 million of it, this doesn't cover the entire cost. In fact, we're still quite a bit shy, as I recall.
Well, so we've, in fact, we just had a meeting earlier today. The, the project looks like it'll be probably in the $9 million range right now. We're still negotiating that. We have 1 million that's already been secured through the, through Congresswoman Garcia's efforts to get us a $1 million grant from the federal government. And then this $2 million will cover another 2 million. That would cover the general fund portion of it. So the, the distribution of that entire $9 million project is spread across general fund, transit, waterworks, sanitation. So they're all paying their fair share of basically how many devices they actually are assigned to them. So we, we believe that that $3 million is going to get us pretty close to what that general fund share would be.
Got it, okay, thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, may I make a motion?
Oh, I'm sorry, Mayor, I had a couple of questions.
Sure.
Sorry, Councilmember Kavanaugh. Okay, so how long are the radios going to last, this 9 to 11 million dollar investment?
We are on 25 years on the current radios?
Wow.
Or more? Yeah.
Okay, so it's.
A while.
It'll last us a while, okay. My, my questions were about, we're a Tree City USA?
Yes.
And we're going to get rid of, you know, 60-some trees?
Yes.
Are we going to replace them anywhere else in the city or they're just gone? Because we do have really bad air quality.
We will, we'll take a look at this area now after they're removed and see if there, we can replace them with some of the trees, with some newer trees. We, we obviously are very concerned about what we replant them with. The, so we'll, we'll move forward on that. We'll, we'll be using the, they'll be recycled, the trees, because they'll be chipped, and the, the wood chips will be used throughout the city. You can see that we don't have a lot of turf left here at City Hall. There is a plan, we have grants available for us to use drought tolerant material for all of our turf. You could probably seeing eucalyptus tree parts out in, in front of City Hall over the next, next year or so.
Okay, so we don't know whether or not we're going to replace the trees. Are we going to be in violation of being a Tree City USA because we're getting rid of the trees or?
Not, not if they're hazardous, no.
Not if they're hazardous?
Yeah.
Okay, but, okay. Yeah, I just want to make sure. I, I worked at a school where they kept getting rid of trees and getting rid of trees, and they never replaced them.
Right.
And, you know, half the kids had asthma at my school, I have asthma, we have a lot of people here with respiratory issues, so.
Yeah, it's, it's hard for us, I, it personally, it's hard for me to get rid of these trees because they've been there for so long. And there's, yeah, they're, they're part of the community, and there's a historical nature of the, the eucalyptus trees, as they were winrows during the, the agricultural times. So we'll certainly look at the area and, and.
They're also not native and highly flammable.
I can guarantee that we'll be planting large trees there, but we'll be planting, we're planting some trees there.
Okay. And then my last question is about the flood hazard, and thank you for doing this, because I've, I had talked about this for a while, in doing this flood hazard and risk assessment studies. I'm curious, it says that the work is going to take three to five years to complete, at a cost of $700,000, which is fine. Is it going to take into account the more extreme weather that we're having? You mentioned Florida, you know, we're having more atmospheric rivers, we're having more, you know, flash floods, and more extreme flash flooding, like across the country and around the world. So will this study take the more extreme weather and climate that we're having into account?
It, it will take that into account, however, it's more focused on how the water falls. The, the modeling that was used to do the original FEMA maps assumed that all the rain would just dump at the same time. Over the wide area. Well, it doesn't happen that way. And, although it does, you, you have the water that flows from the north and south parts of the city that takes a while to work its way down. And it is, but the modeling, the old modeling assumes that it's all there all at one time, and it doesn't work that way. The new modeling accounts for how the water will flow and how the Arroyo Semih can handle that water that is flowing. And where, and where it isn't is what will still end up being in those flood plains. So that's what we're going to take a look at.
When you said technology, do you mean like the infrastructure that we have to handle the water flow?
It is that as well as how water flows and when it does flow. What is the volume of water that would come down from north of the town center and how long would it take it to get down to that area, given if rain falls at a certain rate? So it, it takes, I mean, it's beyond my comprehension, but it's, if you're a hydrology engineer, you understand it a heck of a lot better than I do. But it's, it's taking into those things into consideration.
Okay, and here's my last question. With so much new building that we have going on, apartments, single-family homes, will this study take into account the new building that has happened, that is happening now and that's going to happen in the future?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
May I make a motion now? Okay, perfect. I move to approve the distribution of $7,317,482 from fiscal year 2021 budget surplus as outlined in staff's report.
Second.
Motion second, call for the vote.
The motion passes unanimously. Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, next on the agenda is Item 10A, City Council Member Reports.
We'll start with the head council member, the last one else.
Thank you, Mayor. On Tuesday, September 20th, I, along with everyone else here on the dais, attended the City Volunteer Appreciation Dinner at the Boys and Girls Club, where we all donned aprons except for Mr. Casares. And we, and we served all of the wonderful volunteers that make our city such an amazing place to be, so thank you, all the volunteers. You are what makes Simi Valley a city with heart, so thank you for, for coming and for allowing us to show our appreciation to you. On, I'm sorry, I'm looking at the date for my, Thursday, October 6th, I attended the Clean Power Alliance meeting, a very, very busy meeting. We approved five renewable power purchase agreements with Prologis for local services to serve the power share program. We are making sure that we're going to be able to have enough energy to meet the state requirements for renewable energy that we need to provide for all of our customers. And so we're just trying to keep up with all of the, the needs for energy in the state. And we also approved six amendments to renewable power purchase agreements with various counterparties. And this was due to a number of issues, including the war in Ukraine, including supply chain issues, just unforeseeable circumstances. And we had to, we, we did, it was kind of like an RFP where we, you know, looked at how much would it be if we replace these contracts, and looking at the pros and cons of, do we amend these contracts that we already have? Or do we get new contracts? How much more is it going to cost for us to replace renewable energy that we need to meet the state requirements with the state of California? And we decided, with the exception of one of the six contracts. And we decided, with the exception of one of the six contracts, that it would be better to allow the amendments of the contract. So, I did look at the contract with Waste Management in terms of that as well, and the extraordinary circumstances, because, you know, there might be extraordinary circumstances, there might be a war, there might be supply chain issues, there might be all kinds of things that happen, where you, we might have to amend agreements and, and make sure that... And, and we had some give and take as well, there were some things that we got. And then a couple, a couple of the amendments were just delays that we had, that we'd previously amended three other agreements for renewable energy, because they were going to be able to supply the energy, and some of these contracts are like 10, 15, 20-year contracts. So, we had to make sure that we, we were able to supply the energy that's going to be needed. There has been a huge increase in the demand for energy with the climate change, with the extended heat waves that we've had. The demand for energy seems to just keep increasing, which makes it difficult for, for, you know, organizations like ours, like Clean Power Alliance, to keep up with that demand. So, we're doing a number of things in diversifying our energy. But one of the issues that we're facing with the drought is the loss of hydroelectric, and that's statewide. If you don't have water, then you can't produce hydroelectricity. So, that's one of the, the many issues that we're facing. So, again, we're looking at diversifying, we're looking at stored energy, stored solar energy, and with regard to that, and being able to predict future energy needs, we adopted resolution number 22-10-041, looking at the possibility of energy prepayment transactions, where we would pre-purchase energy ahead of time at a discount. And with regard to that, we would pass on the savings, right, to our customers? And that would help us gauge how much energy that we need. Because we, again, we only foresee, there's not an energy company that sees the demand for energy going down, it just seems to keep going up, as we have more electronic devices, as we have more of these heat waves, everyone's using air conditioning. And so, we're trying to plan ahead and make sure that we meet the energy needs of, of everyone while we are meeting our state obligations for renewable energy. So, it was, it was a long meeting, but we got through it. And then I literally rushed over here where Councilmember Kavanaugh and I did the Cultural Arts Foundation Board interviews. I think I had about 10 minutes, and then I just changed and I came over here. But we had, we interviewed four amazing residents who applied to be on the Cultural Arts Foundation Board, and it was a, a joy to see the enthusiasm and how they wanted to get involved, and the diverse ways in which they're going to help the foundation raise money for the Cultural Arts Center. So, that was my week, and that's my report. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, Councilmember Kavanaugh.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Like Councilmember Louvenos said, I attended the City Volunteer Appreciation Dinner, and yes, all of us served, except for Mr. Casares. I'll throw that in there, too. And then I had the pleasure of going out of town for a family wedding. So, on the 22nd, I left for Tulum, Mexico. For those of you that have never been there, oh my gosh, it was beautiful. It was my first time. It was absolutely fantastic. The wedding, we had, we were in a small boutique hotel with 22 rooms, and we had like 18 of the rooms. So, we were pretty much the entire group there. And, and you know, if it doesn't, if it's not in the agorn, it doesn't happen. So, I do have a picture of the wedding party holding an agorn mag, newspaper, that I will be submitting to Sylvie. The bride, she's my niece, and she looks at me, she said, "Really, Aunt Dee?" I said, "Yes, here, hold it." So, congratulations to Victoria and Dale Garrett. They're very happy, and Victoria was born and raised here in Simi Valley. So, she doesn't work, live here anymore, but she lives down near where she works. She, she went to the Wright High School, she went to Royal. We have seven women in my family, two generations, and we all went to Royal. All seven of us, thank you. The boy went to Simi. We only have one boy, he went to Simi. But, so I was gone for that weekend, but it was, it was a wonderful family time. We had, we had a great time. On Wednesday, October 5th, I had my EDC Executive Committee meeting. There's a lot of stuff going on. It, I, I continue to, to emphasize the EDC has stuff for everybody, small business, it's free, webinars, assistance, just call them. They're bilingual, they're constantly having new and different things. We have upskilling, some training for upskilling that we're getting ready to set up. That's for a company where if your employees need to have some education in order to keep their jobs, or you're moving ahead, we will be offering upskilling for a couple of different businesses. So, EDC, go there, it's got a lot of stuff. I, whenever they, I see anything, the city posts a lot of the stuff, so you can go to the city Facebook page, or on the webpage. And then on my council page, when I see something for the EDC, I always post it, because we have a lot of businesses I think that could be, that could benefit from the EDC. And we're trying to, and the EDC is also going to be handling a loan fund for the city of Simi Valley. We're trying. We took some of our ARPA money, was it the ARPA money? And we're putting it in a fund where the EDC will, will be handling small business loans for us, for our community members here in Simi Valley. So, that will be very good. And the gentleman in charge of that has been there for 10 years, it's Marvin Botang, he does a fantastic job, so he's looking forward to that. Just adds more to his, his calendar, but he's happy. I had the unfortunate pleasure, I guess, of interviewing for a new phone, or a new police chief, or at least talking to the recruiter, since our wonderful chief is going to retire. So, at least we, I told him, I said, "We just want one that we already, like the one we have, that's the easiest thing." So, that, that's what I told them, David, so. And then that same evening, Councilmember Louvenos and I did the Cultural Arts Foundation Board interviews. That was very fun. We had a very, very enthusiastic group of people, and I think they will be very beneficial to the, to the Foundation Board. We had a member of the Foundation Board, the incomparable Marie Bennett, sit in on the, on the interviews, and she was very excited with the, the four people that were interviewed also. So, I look forward to seeing what they're going to do for our foundation. And that's it for me, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Councilmember Judge.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On, uh, oh, I was at the City Volunteer Appreciation Dinner, too. On, uh, and I want to thank all those volunteers. Without them, our city would be in a world of hurt. Volunteers make it happen. On Wednesday, September 28th, I attended the Cuyegus MWD Drought Task Force Zoom Meeting. Too much new came out of that. We were told, you know, I don't think they're getting ready to change anything, or, Mr. City Manager, you have any other things about, I don't think they're getting ready to change anything as far as the drought task force goes, right?
That's correct.
Yeah. So, that's still holding steady the way we are for right now. On Saturday, October 1st, I attended the annual Soaring Spirits Share the Road Bike Ride, put on by Soaring Spirits. Michelle Hernandez is a woman in our, in our community, whose husband was killed in a bicycle auto accident on Long Canyon, and she does, she started this charity and does this ride every year. It's an amazing thing. I like going out there and so, I used to be able to ride it, before I ended up hurting myself. Thursday, October 6th, I attended our SCAG, both Transportation and Regional Council Meetings. During the Transportation Meeting, we did ask the Transportation Committee at SCAG to bring forward a comprehensive plan by the state of California on how they are going to electrify our state, as far as having electric cars, electric buses, electric diesel trucks now, for lack of a better word, long-haul trucks. All these things are going to take power, and we do not have the power in our state. So, we're asking for a comprehensive plan from the state of California before there's a blank check approval of this kind of a policy, because right now, it just can't happen. You heard what Councilmember Louvenos said about the Clean Power Alliance. I mean, they're not going to be able to put up enough windmills or solar panels to electrify everything they want to do. So, we're asking for a comprehensive plan on that, and we're waiting to come back, because all we got at the last meeting was a nice PowerPoint on hydrogen electric vehicles, which are very nice, but they have nothing to do with what we were asking for. During the Regional Council Meeting, something positive did happen. During the Regional Council Meeting, the SCAG Regional Board, which consisted of about 42 elected officials that day, which if anybody has any inclination of working with elected officials is, is akin to herding cats. We have 42 elected officials to vote unanimously to tell the state of California that this is an emergency we're living through right now, and we need to do something about our water problem. The state of California has lagged for far too long on our water problem here in the Southern California. We've had the money, we have the bills passed, now we have to consider this an emergency, just like if the Delta was in an earthquake and salted up tomorrow. Something has to be done now about our water here in Southern California. So, that resolution was SCAG, for the SCAG was passed, and to think that's just, you know, word service, it, it is, but to get SCAG to do something like that, that's a very impressive thing. Maybe just to me, but it was impressive. Friday, October 7th, I attended the Ventura County Transportation Committee, oh, by the way, for SCAG, that's the Southern California Association of Governments. I represent VCTC at SCAG, so I just get to bring all the good news back to us, too. At the Ventura County Transportation Committee on Friday, I got, I made sure all the council members got the Caltrans report, so you got your Caltrans report. Nothing new to report out of the VCTC meeting, we're still moving along there. Nothing really affected Simi Valley in that meeting. And today, I attended the Council on Edging, along with Mayor Pro Tim Lister, and I wanted to say Happy Indigenous Peoples' Day, Happy Columbus Day, and Happy Lee F. Erickson Day to everybody out there. Have a great day.
Okay, Mayor Pro Tim Lister.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I too enjoyed that lovely Volunteer Appreciation Dinner, and it, actually, it was beautifully done. Thank you for those who put it together, and thank you to our volunteers. Wednesday, September 21st, we can, I attended the Simi Valley Arts Commission Meeting, which was a productive meeting. Thursday, September 22nd, I attended the grand opening ceremony at the Vintage at Sycamore. And just a reminder, that is that, that is the, the development, the multifamily development that's taking place on Sycamore, just south of Los Angeles Avenue and the Old Park District Headquarters. It was actually very, a very lovely, a very nice gathering, and I want to commend USA Properties for how they put it together. And I also want to commend our own Stratus Paris, our Environmental Services Director, who spoke at that event. This, just a reminder of this, this work, it's 311 mixed-income multigenerational units, 99 of which are senior apartments, for seniors earning 50% to 70% of the area's median housing income. And so, it's a mixed community, and, and that's all coming online, and, and that, as I understand, is completely filled, but certainly people can get on the waiting list. It was also, they partnered with the Area Housing Authority, I believe, they put up 3.5 million also to fund in that project. And so, anyway, it was a very nice gathering, and, and kudos to our Environmental Services Director Paris for his comments there. Appreciate a meeting with Brian on that day. That evening, I attended a little black dress event, which I understand that Throppin' was put on, and I know that Mike Judge was there assisting as well. And I only have to mention this because, first of all, I appreciate the serendipity of our community. DeeDee, I sat at your table. DeeDee actually purchased, donated and purchased a table, and she went off to Mexico, and so I got to sit with her sister. Why did you know it was, it was, but it was a wonderful community event. Friday, September 23rd, I attended the, the ribbon cutting grand opening for Muné Peruvian Restaurant, and I want everyone here to know about this wonderful restaurant in town. It, it is right, it is that, it is right on LA Avenue, near, right next to the Cultural Arts Center, right next to El Capitan, across the street from them, right there on the corner. Anyway, it...
Deodoro.
Yes, Deodoro, thank you. But the, the sweet woman who has opened it with three other family members, this is really her life's work, with, and the, the food is fabulous. And so, we now have a Peruvian restaurant in our community, and we need to go support it. So, please, it was, it was lovely. That evening, I attended the Simi Valley Youth Council's Fourth Annual Rock Painting Night. Thank you for NAMI, the National Alliance on Mental Illness, who also attended. It was tremendously successful. There were lines of 20, 30 people holding plates to get their paint and their rocks. So, it was, it was hundreds of people there. It was lovely. Saturday, September 24th, I attended Simi Stars, the Foundation Talent Show, fundraising for the foundation of Simi, our, our communities, our community, I'm getting tired, sorry, Community Arts Foundation. But this is the first annual talent show, and I will tell you, we have some incredible talent here in Simi Valley, and it was on display that evening. September 25th, on behalf of the city, I attended Eagle Court of Honor and wanted to recognize Ethan Little, Ian Caranzo, Levi Grant, Graham Nikozia-Labas, all of which received the Eagles that night. Following week, Wednesday, September 28th, I appreciated a meeting with our Police Foundation President Tim Liedemeier to discuss some of the desires of the police, and appreciate them. September 29th, I attended the Simi Valley Police Department's swearing-in ceremony for our newest academy graduates. My hats off to Austin Santiago and Shola Yi, I hope I'm saying their names correctly, but congratulations to them and their families. Friday, September 30th, we had an opening reception at the Cultural Arts Center for a photo exhibit, which you all need to wander over there, it's free to the public, wander in. We have some incredible photographers that came from our community. This, this work is called "Not of the Hands, But of the Heart," and it features the work of 16 photographers, whose work began to take shape during the time they studied with retired Professor Emeritus John Gray, who taught at Moore Park College. And these photographers have now gone on to, to, in very prestigious magazines across, across the world, and so you would, some of their works are breathtaking, so please go see that in our Cultural Arts Center. And it's open to the public during normal business hours. Saturday, October 1st, appreciated attending that Soaring Spirits Ride with Mike Judge. It was very inspiring to see, and as I understand it, it's been 13 years that they, this has been going on, that she's been holding this, this ride in honor of her husband, and also to promote sharing the road and the importance of it. On Thursday, October 6th, there were just several events on that date that were important. Thank you, Mike, for explaining about what came out of, I attended the SCAG Regional, the Energy and Environment Committee, and that, what he talked about passing in the Regional Council, came out of my committee, and it was, it was a work in process. And even that, that day that we were accepting red lines, because we wanted to be sure that there, it was all-inclusive, that we, that we recognized that this water problem is not going to be solved just by conservation. It's not going to be solved just by using gray water, that there, that truly, we have to find new sources, and it's going to take an all approach, all, all of the above approach. And so, and thank you, Mike, for causing that to be shared, that resolution with the council. I believe you had that happen, and I appreciate that. Also on that date was Education Founder of the Month, commend Kylie Donton of Garden Grove Elementary, who was the recipient. Thank you, Brian, I appreciate your meeting. I also had the opportunity of attending the Community Games Closing Ceremonies. This is the 17th Annual Community Games. I likened it to the, to the gold, to the Olympics for, for seniors. It was, it was really delightful to be there and to award the gold medals. And Abily gave the silver, and Dan Perrinck was giving the bronze medals, but it was very fun to, to see the enthusiasm and just the, just the camaraderie that exists among our, and the opportunities. So, my hats off really to, to our, our Simi Valley Parks Recreation, who kind of spearheaded that in conjunction with the Senior Center. So, I'll, and I actually think that's enough, you've heard enough from me, but, but it, there's great things happening in Simi Valley, and it's only appropriate that we say, say happy birthday to Simi Valley, happy 53 years, and may we have 53 more, and counting. So, thank you.
Okay, I think that gives you the shortest report from me. Thank you, DeeDee, I think that you made some arrangements to go to the, the wedding that helped us change the calendar to where I ended up with a two-week break.
Exactly.
And so, I was out of state for most of this time. I did, however, attend the Volunteer Appreciation Dinner, and I did witness that the city attorney was missing.
He was there.
He was there. He ate. Some volunteers didn't get their...
He was willing to serve.
And then the only other thing I'd like to, to mention is, Sunday, October 9th, that'd be yesterday, that there was memorial service for retired lieutenant from the SEMEPD, Dick Thomas, and I did not attend, however, I talked to people who did, and they were very impressed with the number of retirees that traveled long distances to come and attend that service. I mean, there was people from Tennessee and, and other states that far away that came out here specifically to, to give their respects to Lieutenant Thomas, and I, I think that's a tribute to our police department and those that, current officers, too, that attended. So, Chief, if you could let them know that we noticed that, and I'm sure Dick's family noticed it. And that's all, because the rest of the time I was out of state, and that's it. And so, next up is... And so next up is Ten B.
Mayor, I have a couple of requests.
Okay.
The first one is, I'd like to request a, a report on changing the fucking funding, funding mechanism for SROs and crossing guards to alleviate the city of liability. Is that clear? Or do I need to explain more?
I, that's good, and I will second that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, you said you had two?
Yes. My second request, I got a couple of emails and read a couple of letters. I, I do believe that Mayor and Councilmember Judge have violated the city code of ethics, and I am requesting a censure. Specifically, code of ethics requires public deliberations and processes be conducted in an atmosphere of respect and civility. And your responses to Mr. Lapper saying, "I'm sorry, I live in your head, same book, angry not polite, that's why you're irrelevant, do not ensure fair and equal treatment of all persons," and they also violate the code of ethics in terms of refraining from abusive conduct, personal charges, or verbal attacks upon members of the public. So I'm requesting a censure.
I don't think I'll second that one. Could be somebody else, because I don't agree.
The motion fails for lack of a second.
Okay. Next sign, anybody else have anything?
I do have a, an additional item, if that's all right. I am, I've been very concerned about the legislative passing of AB 211, which in essence, ministerially grants multifamily housing in any commercial spot without planning on our part, et cetera. I think it's a huge overreach of the state. It basically guts our planning department, I don't even know why we have a planning department, we, I mean, it just, and so I would like to explore, joining with other cities to take legal action, to at least fight or in some way express our displeasure that this is, this is completely an overreach into our local planning.
I'll second that.
Okay, I'll second, Mr. City Manager.
That's enough for us to go on.
Okay, just, do you have a estimate in time, how long before it can get on the agenda? And if that's, I, I understand that question's probably pretty tough.
Well, we, we'll, we'll shoot for the second meeting in November. I mean, we probably, the, the, well, and my only caution is, the legislation just passed, it was just signed by the governor, it, it, there may not be enough, quite frankly, angry cities enough to do anything about it yet. So, I mean, if, if we wait a little bit longer, there, there may be something developing where we can, we can join with a group of other cities that are as concerned as we are. It, it may be too soon, that's my only concern. I mean-
Or we can be proactive and contact cities and see if we can locate and-
And I've already talked to several, see, I just, I, yeah.
Yeah, so, you know, it's working with League of California Cities, it's working with our local rep with the league, and find out what, what's brewing out there on that. There is our Neighborhood Voices organization that's out there that is fighting, that is putting something on the 24 ballot regarding state overreach in, in broader terms that would affect this. We could potentially join the, that. I don't want to get into too much detail, but-
Okay.
But, but waiting might give us more options.
If I can just add, I've already anticipated a little bit and have already reached out. I do think it is a new law, and so not everybody's had a chance to fully digest that. So I, I would concur with the recommendation of the City Manager, we can wait just a little bit to see how it all pans out.
Okay, if you guys want to wait, you-
But we can also lead the charge in terms of reaching out to others right now, I think.
Oh, yeah.
And, and-
I've done-
Get something brewing.
We'll, we'll definitely start the conversation.
Please.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, anything else? Tonight, we, again, have to adjourn in memory of someone, and most of us, probably, if we didn't know him by name, we certainly have seen him at events, and that was the Reverend Thomas Allen Goodman, who is the chapter chaplain for the Disabled American Veterans here in Simi Valley. And he passed away, I, I, it was a couple of weeks ago, and I don't think we received that notice, but I came across that information and thought I'd share it. And so tonight, we'll adjourn in his memory, a, obviously a veteran and had represented the country and the DAV for many years. So with that, meeting's adjourned.